All right, it is six thirty-one. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody to the six twenty meeting of the Weathersfield Select Board. Please stand, Paul Regis and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To this public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you all. Agenda review. Brandon, do you have a need to move anything around anywhere?
Nope, everything is...
Everything's good?
Yep.
Anybody else? Comments from citizens, topics not on the agenda? Any board members, anything you want to...
Mike?
Yes?
Several weeks ago, I'd sent in a note to the town manager and the chair. Recommendation that we asked all our departments to come up with a possible plan on fuel savings. I'm just curious if any of that went anywhere.
Brandon?
Yeah, we're certainly looking into fuel savings considering the cost of fuel right now. And, you know, it's gonna take us a bit to get that plan together. But the conversation has been started and we've been looking into it for the past year.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you. Any others, any board members, any announcements or anything? I see Mr. Fuller's not here. I assume that he is taking advantage of the sun. Review minutes of the previous meeting. This lists the oh-six, sixteen, twenty-two minutes. I've been informed that those are not in the packet and are not included. So this is just for oh-six, six, twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Some moves.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the minutes, oh-six, six, twenty-two. Any corrections? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on... Next on the agenda is says, "Public hearing." This is not a public hearing. The public hearing is over. The public hearing was closed at the last meeting. So the opportunity and the time for comment has ended.
I believe that does the minutes not reflect that?
This is not a hearing. The hearing was closed. I and the chair, there's no motion to do such. It's declared closed by the chair. I closed the hearing at the last meeting. And a motion was made to adopt the bylaws as presented by the Planning Commission, seconded by David Fuller. That motion was tabled, making it the first item of business on this agenda. And Mr. Fuller has made it. Just so you all know, we, at the end of that meeting, we ended up needing a special meeting for the discussion of finances, financial, which we're gonna go back into later on tonight. Now...
That's not on the clipboard? No, there's no clipboard? No, I see it, but there's no clipboard underneath it?
That's it. That's the sign-in right there.
You guys have to sign in, please.
But there's nothing to hold it, right?
No.
There's no clipboard?
No.
So, on Thursday night, we held a meeting in which we discussed finances only. At that meeting, Mr. Fuller, I think during the discussion of the tabled motion, mentioned six twenty. Robert's Rules of Order says it's the first order of business at the next meeting. So I entertained a motion to continue to tonight and tabled again. We had no discussion, I just wanted to be very clear, we had no discussion on Thursday, other than that about this issue. The hearing. So, currently, we are in a tabled motion. There's also a little bit more that goes along with that. Quasi-judicial process in state law allows a board to go into deliberative session. Zoning Board does it all the time. Conditional use hearings. When a hearing is closed, they go into deliberative session. There's no motion, there's no, it just automatically happens. You go into deliberative session, you weigh the merits of the case, you identify the facts of the case, create your conclusions and write your decision. It is also not required by law for a board to issue its decision in an open meeting. It can be done in writing, as long as that, write that written document is a public record. That's the rules. That's the law. It's section three twelve, title... It's three twelve E and F. Title one. Section three twelve E and F. I have copies, I've distributed to the board so that they understand. So basically what you're doing tonight is you're witnessing a deliberative session. You're not allowed to participate. You're not allowed to ask questions, you're not allowed to comment in any way. We don't have to do it this way. So if we're interrupted, we will do it that way. We will not be interrupted in this process. Judges and juries do not deliberate in public meetings. They do it privately. There's a reason for that. In zoning, we use language that's sometimes referred to as undue and adverse effect. And I think that's where this language comes from, although it's not necessarily defined or obvious. There can be an undue adverse effect on all board members sitting here discussing these facts with in witness. It's not done that way in a jury, and it's not done that way with a judge. And the law is very clear about that. We don't have to do it either. I have copies of that. But we are because you requested it, and I'm allowing it. The board is the only entity that can speak at this time, in this context. Now, there is a motion on the floor. I question whether that motion may be out of order. I made the motion. And the reason I question that is the fact that we haven't had time to deliberate and evaluate the evidence and the facts that have been presented to us. I'm perfectly willing to proceed in open session and have that discussion. Wendy, you asked to table. You asked to table so that you'd have time to review some of the stuff, and I think you commented to that effect as well, Kelly. And so did Dave. So, has everybody had a chance to kind of review the documents that were presented from the Planning Commission? The statements that have been made that are part of evidence here? There was written testimony. There was spoken testimony. Evidence from the hearing. Evidence is the warning from the Planning Commission, the report from the Planning Commission, the bylaws, the map, or maps. All written statements that we received and a discussion. Town plan references, bylaw references, questions. The zoning bylaws, the subdivision regulations in the town plan are all evidence. They are living documents that are existing evidence in any of these cases. An example of that might be at the zoning, at a zoning board hearing. Simply because something in the zoning bylaws pertinent to a permit isn't discussed in the hearing, doesn't mean that that bylaw doesn't exist when it comes time to write a decision. It doesn't exclude that from a decision. So, the same thing applies here. The town plan that was mentioned, the subdivision regulations were mentioned, and the zoning bylaws are obviously what we're talking about. So they're all in their entirety part of the discussion. The discussion, again, is between the board members. So, can the board members, I guess what I want to do is I want to try to establish the board's level of understanding of the evidence that was presented. I've gone over it and over and over and over it, so I have a pretty good understanding of it, but everybody, there's five members on this board that need to understand it as well. So, Wendy, are you satisfied with your knowledge of zoning bylaws, subdivision regulations, the town plan, the questions and evidence that were, statements that were made during the hearing? Do you have any questions?
I think as far as the bylaws and that, I feel comfortable. As far as the map, I probably do have questions or there are things I don't understand fully about it, to be honest with you.
Okay.
There are, there are things that I am not... And maybe this was sent by email, this, as far as this, this is, I mean, some of the map, yes, I've seen, the scenic, that's new tonight, but I would say that that's probably...
What Wendy's referring to is, at the last hearing, this map was provided by the Land use Administrator. In the town plan, Mary Gobranson read the town plan section on scenic views. In the adopted version of the town plan, there, those scenic views are identified on a map. I took those and put them on here so that people could see exactly what Mary was talking about, where they are and where they, where those views point to. So everybody understands. Kelly?
I understand a good share of it. I'm not an engineer, so I don't understand every little line. I think in order to understand that, I'd have to be a zoning person, and that's not what I do. So, I guess what I need to know, I have in front of me, or I've read, so I'm all set for now.
Paul?
Yeah, I'm good.
David?
I've got a few questions, I guess. Was there, when you... First, I don't know what I missed, because I came in a couple minutes late, so did I miss anything?
Not a miss, man.
Okay. So, was there a, in the two previous hearings, there was talk about somehow matching the language that's proposed to the map, but actually going a little bit further than that, and actually putting the roads to the map? Was that, and the names, was that done?
The roads are on that map. They're not named.
But they're not listed and they're not named?
They are in the town plan. There is a transportation map in the town plan that identifies the names of all those roads.
The names of the roads? So was there, was there a assembling of the zoning districts that match the roads? So, there was questions that had to do with scenic and wherever, and where the roads lie in relationship to whatever they were for villages and for C-ten and three to five and things like that, so...
This, this map identifies the the districts, yes. That's what this is here. These are the districts. These arrows identify the scenic views listed in the town plan. And I also wrote down the, and you should have a copy of it there with your map, was with your map, is the legend for what those seven arrows represent. Number one is the view of Mount Ascotney from Vermont Route one thirty-one near the Joe Stoughton House. Number two is the view of Mount Ascotney from Weathersfield Center Road, north of the town line. Number three is the view of Mount Ascotney from Gravelin Road. And number four is the view of Mount Ascotney from US five in the Bull. Number five is the view east from Skyline Drive at the highest height of the land. Six is the view of the Weathersfield Center Church and Grove. And seven is the views west from the West, Weathersfield Center Road, near the former Hunter residence. Those are the seven views that are, scenic views that are called out in the town plan specifically, and that, those are on a specific map in the town plan, and that, what I just read is copied from the town plan. Adopted in twenty seventeen.
Okay. Was, does this map show a coordination of sorts at the... I don't know if Jason's here or not. Is he here tonight, Jason, from Regional Planning?
No, I didn't see him come in.
He had, through email previously, so it was prior to the hearings, is evidence that he, which I spoke of at the last meeting, that, and I didn't even know this, that Weathersfield had twenty-eight thousand five hundred acres. And I mentioned at the last hearing that Weathersfield had forty-four hundred acres of permanently conserved land. Has that been placed on this map to look at for us in coordination with the roads? Or is the majority of that land on mountaintop, inaccessible to existing roads, or...
That is not on this map.
Okay.
That was a separate map provided by, I think Ryan Gumbart, that he produced through Regional Planning.
He has that map?
Yes. That shows all properties that are in some sort of either land trust or some sort of deferred development, conservation, as well as, I believe it was, he had also included current use.
Yeah, but that's different than what...
I know, but I'm just, I'm just trying to, that was the evidence that was presented. It was all on one map.
Well, I'm just trying to get a handle on the road network of Weathersfield in conjunction to the zoning districts and where they are, because I've been here a long time, and the amount of roads that have been adopted in Weathersfield since I've been here, since nineteen seventy-seven, has probably been like a mile or two, tops.
You would be correct. I've gone back as far as seventy-two. It's about one mile since seventy-two.
So, any development, whether it's commercial or residential or anything, happens on existing roads?
Yes.
I mean, that's...
So far.
Pretty, well, it hasn't happened in forty-five years, so... And the town is not in the road building business that I'm aware of. We generally take over roads that are built for us, give or take, you know, a quarter of a mile or whatever that, whatever that means. In a generic sense, and some of the, I've had a lot of time to think about this, whatever it's been since the last meeting, haven't talked to anybody. But when I listened to the meeting and the back and forth comments that happened from the public to us here at the table, it struck me that, and it would have me too, had I been you or Paul, because you've sat for years on the planning board, going through all of this work, and now you're here at this table to consider it to be either final or another decision, which, to me, makes it harder for you too. Because I found a little bit that because you've spent so much time doing it and tried to, and I've, I spoke at the last hearing about how I've, in the last year or two, have gone on to one or two or three of the planning board meetings, and how you guys actually, when you're talking about language, you try to test each thing that you're talking about positively and negatively, to go through that, the language that you're determining. So my question is, when the town plan is up for review every five years, is that correct?
I think it's seven now.
They've moved it to seven? So, Brandon, help me out. So, the town plan in the state of Vermont is important to, in my, in my service to be forwarded to the state of Vermont, but it also has to have a map which, which coordinates that language, that town plan to the state of Vermont for the benefit of us to receive state aid, right?
Yes, that's correct.
For the benefit of us to file for state grants?
And have...
If we don't have the paperwork done and it becomes absent, then how does that affect the town, our ability to function with the state of Vermont?
It would negatively impact our relationship.
So you, every five years, you, or the town manager, it used to be five, you go through the planning board to review the documents, and if you don't change anything, that's fine. You submit the same, same town plan back, and life moves on because you've signed the document. But what happens, like in this case, where I, like I said, I've had a lot of time to think about this. The zoning map, through the changes that we've adopted through the last ten years or fifteen years, the town plan has been changed because some things have come to our table to be changed. But apparently, the zoning map didn't get changed along with that. Is that true enough to say?
Until now. The, the map, when it was adopted, this map, when it was adopted in twenty seventeen in the town plan, stated future land use map. This is the upgrade now to making it the land use map, the current land use map. That's the process.
Okay, so, and one of the things that, and I was kind of hoping, but I don't know, he didn't want it to put on the spot or not, I found it to be not helpful for me to listen to regional planning when you asked the question about, you know, did you do that work, Jason? And he's the senior planner over there, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but but he couldn't remember.
I remember. Paul, you remember?
That was, that was a moment for me, trying to be a decision maker.
I have emails too, by the way.
So have you had any correspondence with regional planning, trying to straighten this out?
I have not. Regional Planning sent me an email, and it contained questions and statements from a resident. So I disregarded it. I did that because at the end of the hearing, I believe it was Mrs. Hindinger asked for our addresses, and I assumed that to be, to send comments to the board. And so the next day, I contacted the town's attorney and was instructed that we could receive no comments, period, from anybody. Once that hearing was closed, it's over.
But the evidence that he put into the hearing was what it was. So that's what I wanted, that's what I was talking about. It wasn't new. It's nothing new for me. It was what I heard in the hearing, and now I'm trying to get my arms around being part of the jury, as you said, about, about what is absent for me.
Absolutely.
Paul?
Dave's a hundred percent correct with, if you go by testimony.
Yep.
That's a separate item. And I did, just want to quickly make a comment too, that we did have a Planning Commission meeting in between the closer of the hearing and today. As you know, you were there, present. I just wanted to inform people that there was question at the Planning Commission about talking about information from the hearing. Mike and I both said that could not happen, and we didn't hear or listen, nobody said anything. But what we did indicate was, as long as it wasn't us, I mean, an individual could contact any Planning Commission, as long as it wasn't Mike or myself.
Yeah, the way the question was asked, it seemed like that person wanted to ask questions right then and there of the Planning Commission, and I was not going to allow that. And he's the chair, but I wasn't going to allow it.
Just, I mean, just to be open and transparent?
It turned out that that wasn't actually what he was talking about, and it was clarified that he could speak with any other member of the Planning Commission as he chose.
Or regional, as they were.
Or regional or anybody else. We're not trying to stop people's right to talk about this, it's just that, because we're in, you know, we're at the final stage of a hearing. Hearing is over, and we're in deliberative process. We can't receive any comments or, that's why I can't allow you to speak tonight. That is according to the town's attorney. Wendy?
I was wondering if he was gonna answer it, but he didn't. So the, he mentioned something, and I'm assuming we're not privy to the information. You mentioned you received, you had...
Not received now, so...
In the past.
As you know, Mike and I have been doing this for for, I don't know, five years, on some of the same stuff that's here tonight. There was some discrepancies, but I don't want to, as far as, there's discrepancies on what maybe Regional Planning commented on, and like I said, I don't, I don't want to get a pushback heat or whatever, but the testimony is what the testimony is.
Right, so then you're coming from it from a different perspective, based on the fact that you have emails.
That's what Dave was saying. We, again, the testimony that Mike and I presented here...
I did, I did, let me take this for a second.
Sure.
I did not get into an argument with Jason Rasmussen because I had no way at that moment to prove anything different. But...
Regardless.
You know, I have my statement, it's, you know, when you're in a hearing, you're supposedly telling the truth, so help you God. And I feel that I did that, and Mr. Rasmussen is disputing that fact. I'm not, I'm not worried about that. That's not what we're here for.
No, no, but I wanted to, if I may, is, I just want to state that the only thing you can comment on and do is testimony that we had during the hearing, it was here. So the testimony was, Jason Rasmussen was a little foggy on where his part played in this whole thing. And Mike and myself both had testimony here of, we knew exactly what Regional Planning played as a part, and we even have it in the Planning Commission statement that was into evidence here, saying that part of the reason that we went down this path was because Regional Plan, Planning, and I'm just reiterating what the testimony was, that Regional Planning had asked us, why do you have so much C-ten? And the future land use map shows this, that was already adopted, so when are you going to adopt this, so...
Yeah, I just liked that Dave had brought that up because it was something that really did stand out. And so, the fact that you mentioned, you had...
I shouldn't have, I've got a lot of stuff, you know, from, it's nothing to do with this hearing.
Not if it hasn't been entered, no, because it has not been entered into that.
It's nothing to do, so my fault. I'm just saying, as a Planning Commission member for the last six, seven years, I have a lot of stuff. I have a lot of stuff at home, I have a lot of stuff here, in, I mean, on the town computer, so...
Dave, were you done with your questions?
No, until I get enough, yeah.
Okay, so... So the evidence I stated from the Planning Commission is the warning of the hearing, that was all done lawfully. That's a fact. The Planning Commission reporting form, also done lawfully, and answers to questions that are called out in the state statute as required by law. That is a fact. The bylaws are submitted as evidence. That is a fact. We had two maps. This was the second one. This is the only one I have, because the first one was basically the same thing. This one, I think, added the roads, if I remember right. The first one didn't have the roads on it at all. And this one did. That was the change that was originally made there. So, those maps. Written statements. Todd Hindinger. Dave, you had, David Gobranson, did you have a written statement that you, you turned in? I wasn't sure of that. I know Patty Arison had, I think, at least one. Okay, and that was, I did not read that into the record, Patty, but it was, it is evidence, it has been distributed to all the board members and has been viewed by the board. Just so you know. You were present, and basically your statements were in writing the same as, somewhat the same, or along the same lines of what you said when you were here. So, but they had, the board has received your written statement. And those, and those are lawful statements that are in evidence. Just so you know. Todd Hindinger. Todd Hindinger's, his statement... Um, Todd Hindinger, Todd Hindinger's, um, his statement, um. What he wrote was specifically addressed questions in the law. Uh, uh, some of it was changes that were made by the, um, planning commission with intent. Uh, that was, that was, as Mr. Fuller just pointed out, uh, through a great deal of debate. Um, we made changes. It, it seemed to me, uh, and this is only my interpretation, the board members may have a different interpretation and that's fine. Please speak up if you do. Um, that when talking about conditional use review and site plan review. Conditional use review is a zoning board, uh, review process. Um, to me, it seemed that that conversation reflected all districts. And I, I'm not sure that that's true. Again, that, that may be the part where. I, I know we've changed it in several districts, mainly in the village. And the purpose for that in the village was the village is a more of a mixed use. And as such, it is both a commercial and residential district. And you're going to have commercial and residential uses mixed together in the village. It's kind of what you want. So the planning commission, um, again, through lengthy debate. Made decisions to move certain levels of business out of conditional use in the village and make them permitted uses. Now let's say, um, a application comes in for a conditional use, uh, uh, I'm sorry, uh, an application comes in. I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to create, uh, because the bylaws are the topic here. And this is what we're voting on, so I want people to understand how the bylaws work. Let's say where the motel burnt down, we receive an application for a gas station. I don't know how many people in this room would wanna see a gas station across the street from Martin Memorial Hall. But it would be a permitted use. Um, so the application comes in and the land use administrator reviews that under site plan review in his process. And he authorizes the permit, signs the permit. Within fifteen days. Um, an appeal can be filed on the decision of, of the land use administrator to allow that business to go in. If that happens, it goes to conditional use review under this, under the zoning board. Let's say the zoning board at that time agrees with the land use administrator. It would then go to the E Court for an appeal process there. What I'm trying to demonstrate for the board is these are the levels of conversations that the planning commission has. In respect to all development and all changes that we're, we're making over there. You might not understand this, but the subdivision regulations, subdivision of land is development. Even though nothing is actually being built and there may be no intent to build. Subdivision is development and that's what it's called. That would be the process that would take place on larger parcels of land identified on this map. And suggested by the Gobrancens that could possibly, uh, damage some of our, our, our views. That we, that we've identified as wanting to protect. When you, when you look in the town plan, you find several different maps. There's, there's. You know, prime ag soil, steep slopes. Um, there's a language in the town plan not to disrupt these. When you look at these arrows on the map and they identify for you the view that you're looking at. The first four identify Mount of Scutney. Mount of Scutney is for, is not in Weathersfield, first of all. There's a little bit of it that is. Most, and almost all of that is in e- either conservation or, uh, easements that you can never develop. Point being that the, those, the, the mountain, the view itself is not gonna be changed by our zoning. The mountain is not gonna change by our zoning. It's not, that's not gonna happen. Are you clear on that, board members? Right? Cause it, we have a three hundred acre forest and the rest of it's mostly owned by the state. So Mr. Gobranson's point that the view would be disturbed. Can only be locally in that, okay, I'm here and I'm looking there and I see the mountain and I don't want anything in front of it. I'm, I'm not sure that's the purpose of zoning. I, I, I think, I think there's a little bit of zoning that's in that. I stated also in the hearing that I was much more concerned about. Playing, the, the placement of solar and wind, renewable energies. That are, are probably gonna create a, a greater damage to our view sheds. And, and I stated that the planning commission is currently working on language to strengthen the town plan. Which is used in the Act two fifty process, not the zoning bylaws, to protect those scenic view sheds. Zoning has to follow the same process. The, the town plan and the zoning bylaws, the zoning bylaws are the implementation tool for the town plan. So when those view sheds are protected in the town plan, they're also protected in the zoning bylaws. Just by their existence. Now, so, so what is, the, the analogy that I, I can come up or the, the scenario that I come up with is. I have a house and there's Mount of Scutney and I have a nice pristine clear view of Mount of Scutney. And somebody buys a lot of property right across the street from me. It's right in the middle of my view and they build a house right there. And now I gotta look through their house to see Mount of Scutney. I'm not sure how controllable that is. I, I think our town plan will, will do a better job of that than. The, than the zoning bylaws, to be honest with you. I think they have to work together and. In, in, in the subdivision process, that's gonna be, it's gonna be looked at. That's gonna be considered. Paul?
I just wanted to let you know in the evidence thing, the information that you've got.
Yes.
Um, John Broker Campbell also sent me a letter.
Oh, thank, yes, thank you. There, I, I knew there were more.
Which is in the packet too. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
I mean, we have a list, obviously, of, of, of evidence in there.
So, so discussion is on town plan ref, uh, was on that town plan references, bylaw references and questions. Um, I was started with Todd Hindinger and Todd Hindinger's points that there's some language that's inconsistent. Because other bylaws have been adopted and the, and the current bylaws do not reflect that. State statute requires us immediately after the hearing process starts at the planning commission. That the zoning administrator start to review all applications under the new proposed bylaws. Um, if those bylaws are not adopted. Then the town must at no charge to the, uh, resident. Review the application under the existing bylaws. So, uh, uh, again, technically right now, all of these bylaws that are through hearing. Anything going through zoning is supposed to be reviewed under these bylaws now. And that would also, uh, be a zone, uh, subdivision regulation, anything, uh, that, that's being proposed. Um. The process of subdivision of land. When, when, when Mr. Gobranson or Mrs. Gobranson talks about something destroying the view. And, and this is in context to changing from C ten to three five. First of all, that one house could still be built there. If there's nothing on that property. Person has a right to build a house. And, and, and if the town plan doesn't give some sort of structure and some sort of protection against where that, you know, you know. Where that, what that view is and whether that, you know, is that person protected that has that first house? I, I've heard stories all over Vermont, for the most part, where somebody's had this, their, their house and they've lived there for years and years and years. And enjoyed their view. And somebody sold the property across the street to somebody from somewhere else and they built the house right in the middle of their view. And basically destroyed it. I get that. It happens. I'm not, I'm not really sure how to stop that from happening, to be honest with you.
I, I just wanted to make, are, are you, you're addressing us, right?
Yes, I am.
Sorry, I just wanted to.
I, I'm trying to make sure.
You're going through, you're going through the, the.
The, the stuff that was presented to us, um, and, and. And please, if you have any questions about it, Wendy, you said you had questions. Wha- what, what questions do you have?
I'm listening right now. If something comes up, I'll address it.
Okay. Um, then I'll, I'll continue on with, with the, with the subdivision, uh, of, of a piece of property. That's the first thing that has to happen. You, you can't just go build a house. You don't just go get a zoning permit unless you. Like, like, let's say you have a twenty or twenty-five or thirty acre lot. If there's a house already on it, okay, you've got your one principal use. You could do a P U D though. That's already there. So, so you could move into a P U D and put five or ten houses in. Depends, you can't go more than twenty-five percent, more than the, what the lot could be broken down to based on its. On its, uh, current zone. So if it's in a C ten and it's thirty acres, you could do three houses in a P U D. Um, so just because it's a C ten, doesn't mean that it's necessarily protected. Just because it goes to a three five, doesn't mean it's necessarily destroyed. This is all conjecture. It's, it's speculative. It, it could go either way. We, we don't know. We, we try to be cautious and careful. But, you, you know, we do our best. We have a lot of discussions. We don't always get it right. We make mistakes and we'll correct them as we go along. So the process begins with a subdivision request. Somebody wants to put in. They wanna subdivide that three acres into, or, or I mean, that, that thirty acres into a couple of other lots. Now they could go down as small as three. Subdivision may not allow that. The subdivision regulations may not allow those lots to go that small. It depends on all the other factors that we have to consider through the subdivision process as to whether or not. Those, and Mr. Fuller made very, very clear something about a, a resident across the street that wanted to do that. In a C ten zone and that came out at close to twenty acres. Because of the topography, wetlands, protected soils, whatever was over there. That did not allow the subdivision to go that small.
Was that based, was that based on the town bylaws or was that in conjunction with also dealing with the state? Cause I know everything that we do through the town, we, we can make one decision and then it goes before the state and that can change. So is that?
Road frontage.
Okay.
Road frontage was the killer.
Okay.
You know, after the ninety-five map came in. Also was entered subdivision regulations which provided pretty much the stopping of spaghetti lots. You, you had to have one foot of road frontage for four foot of backdrop. So on that particular that I mentioned and that you just brought up again. There was a small amount of road frontage and the landowner can get around that by building a road. But it's very costly. So it's prohibitive to, to say that you're gonna use the other ten acres in back of the first ten. Because it might cost fifty thousand dollars to build a road to get to the back ten.
But that's still just the first part of the process, which is the division of the land. Following that, you still have to get a zoning permit. To, to build the house. State permits to do water and septic. Um, where are those gonna go? And, and again, a- and, and we do have to change a, a bit of our process in subdivision. Because, and, and I've been, I, I don't wanna say I've been wrong, but maybe I have been. Did you all hear that? This is in regard to subdivisions and water wastewater permits. State law requires us to know about those, where they're going. Uh, where they can go. And we have not been doing that in subdivisions. We've just been noting that these permits are necessary and require, state law says we have to do it. We have to get more involved with that. That, that, that could be an update in the, in the law. I've, I've noticed a lot. I've been around since about, I don't know, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Um, and, and when, when that came in, we just kinda took our hands off it. But now the, the law is pretty clear that you can't do that. You, when you, we've always said we have to create developable lots. Well, that's a really important part of a develop, develop, a developable lot. Water and wastewater. Where can they go? So we'll be moving into that.
I think some of the language has come though, that, um, when that is said that dependent upon state, you know.
Yes.
I think it's always been pretty clear that you could or could not do something based on that. I understand, maybe they're making it clearer, but.
Well, again, you know, our, our job is, is to make lots that can be developed.
Right.
A- and the, the importance to that is particularly to Mr. and Mrs. Gobranson's point. Out on a thirty acre lot that's in this view shed. If, if I can make ten three acre lots, you know, so I can sell them off and make a lot of money, I might wanna do that. Not me personally, I'm just. But when you start looking at what those three acre lots would be, you may find out that you can only do two or three lots or three or four lots or four or five lots. And they're, and they're much bigger based on all of the other things that, that lay there. Each lot is different. Every piece of property is different. So the, the, the process is very extensive that, that we go through. Dave?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um. I, I'm not the chair, but, but I'd, I'd, I'd like to poll the board. To see if they have enough, each member has enough information. That's been presented, gathered up, that they thought enough about it to make a decision one way or the other. Or, because, um. I don't know that what you're going through about discussing whether or not subdivisions would help or not help or. Or whether to keep, to have somebody buy the piece of property to prevent that from happening. I mean, there, there are other ways to go about doing business. For whatever, if you, if you feel that way, if you're, you know, if you're scared that something might happen to some piece of property or whatever, but. But I'd like to gather, I, I don't know whether everybody's ready to do that or not for the five people here. Uh, to say that you've had enough information or not. So the motion. Procedurally, there's a motion to table the motion which was. So the table, so the tabling is really, we've already, already passed that motion, right? Because we've tabled it to this meeting.
We tabled it to this meeting, but that motion is still on the floor.
Right. So what is the, what is the procedure? Have you asked counsel or have you done enough homework to know whether that, what happens if that motion is not acted on? Or acted on, or I, I know it had to have warnings. I know it had to have forty-five days and advertised in the papers. I know different things like that, so.
The board could continue to deliberate if they feel they need more information. Deliberative process is just something that happens when the hearing is closed, you're in deliberative session. We however have a motion on the floor. Um, which, so we would have to table the motion again if you choose not to take any action because you need more information. I'm not sure you can, I'm not sure we're at a stage in this where we cannot take action. I think the action was, there, there were three actions that were pointed out at the last meeting. We can approve it, we can not approve it, or we could send it to town meeting for a townwide vote.
Well, so, can I speak again?
Yes.
Oh, um, sending something to the town meeting vote doesn't make sense to me. Because I'm still having trouble assembling what I'm even thinking about. So, so to present something to be discussed or not discussed. Um, isn't really that accurate. I'm, I'm stuck on the last hearing. So I, I mean, I'll lead off here. I don't have enough information to make a clear decision for me.
So you would prefer to continue in deliberative.
No, I'm not sure of that because I don't think enough work has been done to coordinate the regional planning, to place the language on the map for consideration. That's where I'm at.
Paul?
I, I have enough information to. to, to make this.
Wendy?
I'm feeling the same way. It's, it's not even about all the bylaws. It is about the map. Whether we've had, been presented with enough information on it to make a clear decision on that.
Kelly?
I'm the same as her, David.
Okay. So. What information do you need on the map? It has to be information that was presented in the hearing. So what would the questions be? That you don't have? Paul?
Hey, so, I, if I may, I, the, the question that I have is twofold. Yes, I would, I would wanna understand, I'd wanna understand that, but I don't know if that's needed for here. If you've got three members right now that are not, um, they don't have enough information, that they have all had time, and they said that they did go through what was presented at the hearing. Um, I, I think maybe we need to take, we need to look at what motion's on the floor, and then people maybe need to decide what they wanna do with anything else.
You're s- you're suggesting to act on the motion?
All I'm getting at is, if my, Mr. Todd just asked if, if you guys could help and give, um, more clarity on what you're missing, but I don't, do you think what you're missing, you'd get out of the information still that was presented at the hearing?
I don't think so.
Okay, 'cause you can't get anything else, obviously, so. So I, that's what I'm saying is, I don't know if that matters, what.
I, I'm not, well, I'm not willing to throw away all the work, but I don't think, i- it bothers me greatly that it didn't, you know, and I know you ma- you guys, because you've been on the planning board, and, and, and you may have that, is one of the things that I'm taking off from the last hearing was, there seemed to be, from a senior planner, and I get back to that, because it stuck me pretty hard, where all through the years of working with the roads, or through the town manager's office, and through any board, that regional planning has worked a lot closer than what just happened. So. I don't feel, I don't feel, right at this particular moment, I don't feel the rush to do this, but, but I did mention early on, you know, like fifteen minutes ago or more, that, that the reasons why I asked was about the language that has been adopted by us and different segments of the town plan a- a- at the select board. And it must have implications to the map, that maybe the residents aren't aware of already. You don't think so?
Um. No, 'cause, uh, m- most of it was connected to, uh, like there was the business bylaws, and then everything that goes along with that, signs, um. You know, where those, you, you, those are, those are already placed within the, the district uses, where you can do it, where you can't do it, where it's a conditional use, what's a conditional use. Those things are already taken care of. Um.
Yep. It just seems to me that when you, when you have the town plan, like I said, at the very first thing when I said, the town plan comprises of what? Language?
Mm-hmm.
All kinds of bylaws? It must.
There are bylaws in the town plan.
Oh, okay, then, then, um, but certainly lots of language to say what happens with the town, right?
Mm-hmm. That's, that's what leads us, the, the zoning bylaws are the implementation tool for the town plan. That's what the planning commission's job is, is to read the town plan which we wrote, and to create the zoning bylaws. This is basically the last step of those zoning bylaws, um.
Yeah.
So what do you propose? Mr. Fuller?
Well, yeah, well, that's why I was asking Paul about what he, what he was thinking about there, when to take action on the motion on the floor, and then, and then take it up, uh, as a, I don't know.
No, I guess, I guess my question is, what's the official motion on the floor right now?
Official motion on the floor is to uh, adopt the bylaws as presented by the planning commission.
And who made that motion?
I did.
And the second?
David did.
Okay.
I did?
For discussion.
In a minute?
For discussion. You, you, you second it for discussion.
I didn't see, I didn't see the minutes.
It doesn't matter, you were here. So, okay, no, so.
He's changing his name.
No.
But that, that's, that's what we're deliberating about right now, is that motion to approve.
Yeah.
So, um, so I guess you need to, I mean, I, I'll, I'll say it, call, call the vote. I mean, I, call the vote.
If you're gonna call the vote, the first thing is, you need a two-thirds vote
Yep.
to stop debate. Well, actually, you don't, because we're in deliberative session.
So what are we doing coming?
I think I kinda went around the table here a minute ago, when I just asked everybody to poll the board to see what they were thinking, right? I mean, I, I, we can't be.
So if you call the vote, you'll get it off the table, one way or the other, or you can rescind, you can rescind your motion.
Or the board can take no action.
And then what's in limbo? That's what I'm.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is where, where do you want this to be? You don't, you don't wanna destroy all the work. What does that be, wha- what is that?
I know, I know, I don't know.
What does that become? Um.
Well, it goes back to the lap of the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
It's a procedure, as a matter of procedure, because then the town plan would be incomplete without the map, I guess, or without the language that's been placed for us to consider, through all the, I mean, Todd Hiddinger went to a great checkpoints about, you know, a, a list of whole, of things.
So the motion on the floor currently is to adopt the map and the t- and the zoning bylaws as presented by the town plan. Um, so we could, we can, we can dispose of that through a vote. Um, let's do that first.
Do, do you need a vote, or can you just poll your motion to do that? Or are you trying to? Do you want an official vote?
I just want, I wanna dispose of the motion at this, at this time.
Because you can poll it.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll withdraw the, uh, it do- yeah, it doesn't matter, I know, you know, I, I can count. Uh, so, I, I, I can withdraw the motion. Um, and David, that, you're the second. So you withdraw? Yes, or no?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking we should vote, and there's a whole nother reason why, because the motion to table and everything, this is exactly why this is on the, on, as a matter of the, we're talking about it here for the last hour. So I'm not sure.
Kind of what I thought.
I'm not sure we can't withdraw, or something.
Well, I, it's a ta- it's, it's, to lay the motion on the table means it, it becomes.
I'm gonna say if you vote, then it's done. And that's fine.
Well, and, and that was, and, and that was my thought, um. Um, we also could do exactly what Mr. Fuller, uh, well, what you said. Like, we draw the motion, withdraw the second, and we can deal with another motion.
But we know where that's gonna go, so.
Send it back to the planning commission.
Yeah, which is fine. If that's what they.
That's just the instructions from the board, so that you're not leaving it just with no action and no, no direction.
So you got two options. Vote or poll.
Okay.
Ask for another one.
So. I'll call the question, I'll, I'll call the original question, which is to adopt the zoning bylaws and the map as presented by the planning commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay.
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 You say nay?
Nay.
I'm saying. Don't need to vote.
Okay. Uh, so, the motion is defeated, uh, three to one with a, with one abstention. Paul abstained. Do I hear a motion to send the bylaws and the map back to the uh, planning commission uh, for review, update, and correction?
I think the motion, does that go back to the planning commission?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Does that motion sound complete enough? What, what do you need?
Um, we, we definitely come back, and that's where it's gonna go. I just, I want more definition um, from the board members. We have, we have good input from the citizens that have shown up now, which is great. And I'm also appreciative of the people that are coming to the planning commission's meetings as of the last few meetings, so that's been great. Um, and, and, like I said, I just, we, we've talked about, I, I think, I think most of the issues that everyone's having, and the board themselves, is not necessarily the bylaws that are sitting in front of us, it's this, it's the map, and how the map is looked at. So there's some things personally that I wanna look at when it comes back to the planning commission, that I will say as a select board member, to go back, is I want, I want a full map that's got every overlay, everything. Next time we come to a hearing, next time we come here, I want, I don't care if we have to print out twenty-five pieces of paper that sit on top of each other somehow. Um, I want every overlay. Dave's talked about, um, you know, uh, land that's, that's in trust, or land that's in, you know, current land use. We've talked about deer wintering yards, we've talked about, you know, we have some aquifer overlays on here. Because I think that's gonna give a really good picture of what areas you can already not do stuff in. You and I have seen that, that has not been here for the board to see.
And I've heard.
Um, so, so that's one thing, like I said, I want, I want, and then y- y- you and I have to figure out, I wanna, I, and I, I don't care about saying this publicly, but I, I, we need to have, sit down with Jason and Regional and find out where the disconnect went, and if they're not supportive of this going forward, then then I don't know, but, that, that was, I, I need, we need to figure that out. Because that was also a, a, a holding point for members here on the board.
And then I'd be able to vote.
There was also some inaccuracies on percentages. I mean, the, uh, the generic throwing against the wall of, we're going from eighty percent C-ten to twenty was wrong. Jason Rasmussen corrected that in testimony. He said, at best, it was sixty to begin with. So if we're gonna start throwing numbers around in math, we're gonna start throwing the right numbers around.
You had other issues with the map? What were those?
Yeah, it was similar to what Paul said. It was, current use, that doesn't, those kinds of things don't, don't matter to me, specifically. What would matter would be land that would be um, not in any means to be able to be dealt, developed regardless of zoning districts. So, the Army Corps of Engineers is something like twelve hundred or fourteen hundred acres in Weathersfield, that will never have a house on it, ever. Um, so those things, I, I, I mean, I'd like to see a whole circle around here that says, and then put down big letters, says Army, or whatever. It's gotta be a lot easier to read than this. And quite frankly, the color code thing, if you look at this from the outset.
Oh, yellow.
Yeah, it's all yellow, so you're saying, oh my God, this is like all yellow.
We've talked about this. I want purple.
Yep.
Very easy.
Wendy, any other things, any other stuff that you're looking for on the?
No, that's what I'm looking for, what he was saying.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yep.
Okay. So, we have clarity on what you want. Um, you're the chair, so you and I have it both, have them both written down. I'll keep track of it when it comes back here.
Can I?
Keep track of it over there.
So, 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 there's a motion and, and a second to send it back with, and this is, we're in discussion right now.
That's correct.
Um, when we're done, and that's done, I'd like to make just one statement, as a select, I mean, as the planning commission chair, if I can, when you're done.
Okay.
I, I have one more comment.
Go ahead.
So we're talking about sending it to the planning, good. Uh, you know, the public is well attending here, okay? This is your shot. I opened the door. I helped open the door. If you're interested.
Better be there.
Start coming back to see how the words fit the map, or the map fits the words, or, I don't know what. Because the, when I first started talking, and I asked the town manager about how this fits into state aid, or whatever else is going on with the state process, or grants, or whatever, these things do need to be filed for paperwork. I hate paperwork. It is what it is. I'm done.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor to send the map and the bylaws back to the planning commission? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Polish. It seemed kinda corny to vote aye, wouldn't it?
So.
It's, it is four to one, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, and Paul, go ahead.
No, after you're done, I'd just like to make a comment. So it's four to one, you said, right?
It was four to one, yes.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you, everyone, for coming out. I know this might feel painful, but this went, you know, uh, in, in a good direction, and we already have some people showing up for the planning commission. Um, I do chair that. Um, it'd be an awful lot um, to handle if we had everybody there, but I want to have as many people as possible. We are gonna, we, we have on the agenda already a second round of bylaws that we've started looking at, not necessarily these, that we, we were already started to work on, on others, and wording and language. I think what we're gonna do now is take a step back and take a look at some of these. Um, um, Mr. Hiddinger had some, some good comments and some things. Um, I've got some ideas on on some usage tables that are gonna be a lot clearer for people to see. I'm gonna try to present. I, I don't know if I'll have time to get everything done for the next meeting, per se, but we're gonna start talking probably about these and this map, and try to figure that out. Um, so please, online, come to the meeting. Um, I'll try to get everybody's input as much as can, but obviously with this many people, we can't be there until twelve o'clock at night either, so. Emails, if you've got thoughts and comments, send it to the land use administrator, to myself. I'm on, I'm online for, uh, you'll find my email on there, um, or Brandon. Um, be glad to hear it, so, thank you.
Any, any idea how long it'll take?
To get back up here?
To get it back to.
Three days.
You, you want the honest truth? You want the honest truth?
Honest.
We're looking at at least a year, probably.
Wow.
You think it'll be that long? Seriously? We're not gonna be here that long. We gotta get it wrapped up quicker than.
Why, where am I going?
Can I make?
Meet, meet first, one second, then I'll come over to you.
I just think, I think it'll take a little bit. We just wanna do it right.
The process of deliberative session, hearing, um, this process is what it is. And to see all of you, uh, here, and, and being involved in the process is a really good thing. We, we don't always agree. I didn't, uh, for my reasons. Um. We do have polar opposites with zoning. Um, we went through that with the the, the, the petitions to remove zoning in two thousand and ten. And the administration in, in, in its effort to save zoning talked about creating balance. Now, that doesn't mean all the way this way, and it doesn't mean all of that way, all the way that way. And everybody needs to understand that, that there, we, we, this is what we do at the planning commission, this is what Dave was referring to in discussion. We, we, we get along, we, you know, they're not, they're, they're spirited to some degree, but we're very, we're respectful with one another. But we do discuss all the way this way, all the way that way, and try to, try to figure that all out and get to a middle ground. Please come and talk to us. Please help us with that. Please help us to understand what that means. Is there anybody that would like to make any comment at this time? As I said, the, the hearing and all of that is disposed of?
I just, I have one quick comment. Um, I would advise everybody to, uh, read the town plan, because all this is directed by the town plan. So there's all the zoning in town. So you need to read and understand the town plan, and if you don't like the vision of the town plan, get involved with planning and make it where it needs to be.
That's a very good point, and something that we're working on right now that is extremely important, and this is probably more detrimental to your views and what you see in Weathersfield than anything right now. Renewable energies. Maps are being created outside of Weathersfield to identify where things can go, where they can be sighted, where, what, what, you know, where's the best place for wind, where's the best place for solar, what, you know? Think about where those things are. Just so you know, they, they wanted us to create a map that said, this is a preferred site, this is a preferred site, this is a preferred site. Our previous land use administrator, Sven Federal, was a very articulate um, attorney. And he said, you know, you guys wanna avoid this, you're putting a bullet, you're putting a target on your back. You put this out there and you say, preferred site here, 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 and here, you're gonna have solar sites there. How big? Well, depends on how big the site is. Um, the ones that you see around here, the one down at the end of one oh six and ten, on, on the south side of, or the, yeah, south, south side of Perkinsville, is, that's a five hundred kilowatt. The one, you can't see, that's at Pegasus, five hundred kilowatt. The one at the, the highway garage, five hundred kilowatt. That's, those are the smallest sites regulated by Act two forty-eight. It was my feeling that putting a target on our back wasn't a good idea. Let people figure out where they can go on their own. We don't need to advertise that we want it here, or here, or here. Maybe that's not the right thing to do. But I don't wanna see the sides of the mountain covered with windmills or solar panels. I, I don't like the way they look. I, I think they, they have a place, but I don't really wanna look at them. I don't know how you feel about that, please talk to us about it. This is a big thing that's going on with the town, a change in the town plan right now, is how to handle this.
Um, who, you said those decisions are made outside of town? Who makes those decisions?
These are, these are USGA maps, I believe. They, they've identified, they've done the whole state, they've identified where would be a good place for
So, and so it's done by the state? And what branch of the state?
USGA.
USGA? Yeah, that's federal, rather than state.
Oh, 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 sorry, yeah. But, uh, whoever's doing it, doing it for the state. Ginger.
What, when's the next planning?
Um, Monday night.
This coming Monday?
Yep.
Every second and fourth, Monday.
Every second and fourth. Six thirty.
Six thirty, same as this one.
Steve, I can then call. Would my voice be stronger by attending the meeting as opposed to saying an email? Do you have a preference?
I, I, I don't, you guys are welcome. All I'm saying is that, um, this is gonna be slow, we're not gonna all of a sudden make big changes Monday night, but I'm, I'm welcome. Anybody send email, come, whatever you'd like to do, listen in. The more you listen in, the more you're gonna understand too, even like what Mike was saying about that. Mike, can I ask one?
I, I just want really quickly throw out, we're, we're doing the same thing, we're online. You could stay home and do the meeting. It's up to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
No. Hold on, I just wanna make two comments, um, quickly. For this group that's here right now, online from the other day, there's about forty-five to fifty different people that have been part of this, okay? Now, I, I think that's about two point five percent of the town. This is an FYI, we still, this is great, but it's still
I think, I think it's two and a half hundreds, a hundred percent.
Yeah, right, I'm sorry. My decimal point off, uh, my decimal point's off, but yes, what I'm getting at is very, very, very small percentage.
It is.
But this is better than I've, we've, I mean, been doing this six years, I never seen this many people in one room, except for, maybe when the farmers came out, cause we talked about that, that time.
I'm, I'm gonna hit another point again, and that is the, the petitions of two thousand and ten, we did five meetings that had thirty to forty people in every single meeting. So, a hundred fifty to two hundred people that came out and voiced their opinions then. And I haven't forgotten those opinions.
No, we have them too.
I know, we do.
We have documents. The other thing I wanna ask the board, by the way, um, there's been some talk about how bylaws come up here. I'm gonna just quickly ask the board, do you guys wanna see two or three at a time, or do you want, do you want the whole town plan at once and the whole bylaws at once? What would you like to see?
I, personally, I don't, and I work on the Dadburn thing, with the planning commission, it's too much.
What I wanna do is nip that in the bud now, cause there's a lot of talk that's been out there about
Can't just show us the, the parts that you change?
Yes, please, color coded, um
Yes, that's it. That, that's our intent, is, is to, to show, to give you a document that shows to, strike out what's being changed and insert what is replacing it.
So, not all the
So, you can identify what
Not all the, I don't want all five hundred pages.
You guys want like five or seven at a time? Right?
Depends on how big they are.
Yeah.
Depends on what they are.
You don't want the whole document at once, like every single bylaw?
No.
That we would change. We don't, you don't wanna wait and have one big homesome, okay? Just checking.
It's up to you guys, again.
I think, I had a board member
It was you once?
Yeah.
Or you just wanted to wrap up.
Well, that too, but, but the reason why all this is like really important is because later on in this meeting, we're gonna hear something that's not happened in years. Despite what everybody thinks about properties rising, we're gonna get some news that the grand list here in Weathersfield went down a little bit, down by like one percent. That's like an earthquake, okay, on the budgets. So, the reason why that all of us need to thoughtfully think about what might be added for Weathersfield, for, I believe, for houses, not necessarily for business, we have other communities that can do businesses. There's a lot of vacant buildings in Springfield and Windsor and everywhere else, is because we don't wanna become a gated community, I don't anyway, where our children won't be able to have homes like we have. So, when the, when the grand, we're gonna get the news here. Despite all of the activity that was going on, that all got wiped out by a single, uh, move on the grand list going down. The next thing is, I did, the, the, and the Vermont Business Magazine had a article about this town solar project, I think, didn't it, Brandon?
Yes.
I think it, it coordinated how many houses were gonna be used.
Surviced.
Huh?
Serviced.
Yes. Yes, their, their, their whole power, so I'm just gonna frame this for everybody. There's sixteen hundred and fifty parcels in Weathersfield, maybe seventeen hundred, and only about fifty don't have some type of buildings. And I did the math really quickly, we would need two hundred acres of solar panels to power Weathersfield. That's a lot of tinfoil, folks. So, when Mike talks about zoning, about where they're going to be, I mean, that would, that whole area would take all of the fields that I do as solar panels, so zoning's kind of a big deal, and I've, and then they're letting these things go in, and they, they can come into town, and I, I listened to the one that was at Bernard Marl's old farm, and I argued for them to put it in a different place, not to ruin that farm. But, but they did. So, I guess that's my only comment.
Oh, and
Two things, first, Dave, I cover more than all of my electricity with rooftop solar. So, there's no reason to have acres and acres of solar panels when so many of our houses could have rooftop solar and take care of it. But mostly what I wanted to say is a process thing. You likely talk about being able to watch online. I don't have internet at home. I don't know how I would have seen the warnings in the newspaper, because I don't see the newspaper unless I go to the town library and look for it. So, when I first moved here, the internet was not a big thing. It barely existed. And I knew about the planning, the, the planning that would have happened, it's starting in maybe nineteen eighty-five?
Seventy-two.
Well, the one that I, the first one I was here for. People came to me, a newcomer in town who knew almost nobody, and asked me if I wanted to participate. And I participated, and we had multiple groups of ten or twelve people batting things around and distilling ideas and putting everything together. I haven't seen that happen since. If you want participation from the town, you've got to reach out to people. You've got to make it known in a really broad way that our, uh, participation is wanted. I only knew about tonight, because I have friends who said, hey, you might wanna know what's going on, it's too late to say anything now, but
So, so let me ask you this. What do you think we should do to make sure everybody knows?
You should have it come out in the town report, for instance. You could have somebody speak at town meeting. Something that is visual, you've been working on this for a long time, but I would never
Okay, let me address, let me address your first two points. It ought to be in the town report. When I was chair of the planning commission several years ago, I put it in the town report, that we were working on the town plan and zoning bylaws. Go look, it's there. I, and I, I, yes, it's there. And, and then, uh, what, 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 the second one was, uh, oh, town meeting. At more than one town meeting, I addressed the same thing, that the planning commission is working on zoning bylaws, town plans, and nobody's coming out. Please come talk to us. I've done that at several town meetings, and, and you're at most town meetings.
Until COVID, yeah.
Yeah.
And actually, at one of those, I came up to you and I said, I don't have the bandwidth to be part of the, making the plan, but I want to know what is going to come up for approval. And I never heard.
Well, you, you know, I don't wanna sound crass, but it's not our job to go out and tell every single person face to face that we're having a meeting. We, we post the meetings, and, and we do our best to get that out there. As I just said, I, I, I've talked about this more than anybody. I, you know, the, the petitions to remove zoning, I was a part of that, the petitioners, to remove zoning. I didn't wanna remove zoning, but I got everybody's attention pretty well, didn't I? So, you, you know, we joke about it sometimes, I got you right, uh, that, um, that, 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 that's what I do. I, I try to stir the pot, to get people's attention, to get them involved, because simply telling somebody we're having a meeting doesn't work. I, you know, I could call ten or fifteen people, and probably none of them would show up. It, you know, so, at some point, you keep calling everybody and expecting nobody to show up, or do you just stop? You, you know, I mean, I, I understand your plight, but we post these in the town office, the, the, every meeting is warned properly, a, and it's posted in the town office. You, you gotta get to the town office and look for that stuff. It's on the website, but if you don't have bandwidth, you can't use that, I, I get that, but Post office and in the paper, thank you, John. Greg, go.
Something that'd be very helpful, I think, being on the parks and rec and other committees, um, how to, how to reach people, the best way to reach people. If you have any ideas or suggestions, email it, write a letter to the town manager or the town office to let us know how to reach people.
Yep, I, I, I got one of the, how, how many, how many of the people in this room reached out to like fifteen or twenty people that that are, are either business owners, or, uh, you know, people that might wanna build a house, or, you know, subdivide their land, or something like, I, I mean, did you reach out to anybody like that, or is it? You know, did they come to the meeting? Good.
You had a hand behind you, Mike.
One other thing that might be helpful, I don't know how many people are on it, but I noticed that quite a few people use Front Porch Forum. That might be one place to advertise. And it might not be every meeting that people wanna come to, it might be when decisions are gonna be made, that people wanna figure out what's going on. And it's hard to know whether this is the meeting that I need to be there for to get the information that is important to my future versus
I'm, I'm gonna address your point that, that maybe I don't wanna be involved in the process, but I wanna be there for the decision. I, I think I made it pretty clear how frustrating that is, the people that put in hours and hours and hours working on that stuff.
A hundred percent.
And, and it's not fair to them to have people come out en masse, based on feelings, that something shouldn't happen, without having the knowledge, and having been to the meetings and listened to the discussions. So, I would encourage you to go to those meetings. I'm gonna wrap this up, and we're gonna move on, cause we got a lot to get through tonight. So, I, 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 sometimes I sound like I don't appreciate you. Trust me, I appreciate every single one of you. And I don't intend, it's not my intent to be abrasive, but I, I just try to say things, they just come out. Sometimes, they don't come out sweet. I apologize for that, I hope, I hope I haven't offended anybody, I probably have, I, again, it's not my intent to offend, offend anybody. I, I'm here, and, and I truly believe that everything that I do, I try to do in the best interest of this town. I don't always get it right. Nobody does, and nobody has, and nobody will. We work together to get there, you know, that, that's what a community is. So, I, I can make mistakes, and you can correct me, and, and, and I won't be offended by that, I, I will appreciate that, and I will learn as we go. With that, I wanna say thank you to everybody for coming out. Please come to the planning commission meetings, please work with us, we'd love to see you over there.
Have fun.
Um, yeah, it's a lot of fun. But, uh, but we would love to see you over there and help us, help us to get this stuff right. That's what it takes. So, thank you all for coming out, thank you for your participation. And you can stay and watch the rest of the fun if you want, we got a lot more to go.
Thank you for your work.
Where did you, where did you leave off? Did you get through all of the other, the minutes and everything?
No.
Yes, yeah, we, we, we did, we did
You got through the minutes?
Yeah.
And, and all the stuff except the hearing, now you're on the
Down to number seven.
We're in order, so I was gonna take a minute, all people clear up, yeah, we're on the
I wanna say how much I appreciate your work, please. I often don't agree with you, but I have a lot of respect for the
It is the average, you should see what's coming, the New Hampshire is asking the two prime electric companies, Eversource, and there's another one. Eversource has filed for a hundred percent rating case. So, the electric, the grid is gonna be like in trouble, and then the next one was forty-seven percent. Wait till GMP comes in, it's gonna be crazy.
Anyway.
Yep. Those are the averages, I just caught that, see, I caught the average utility bill for the homes, it's something like fifty or sixty for the five acres. No, 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 I'm talking about the homes that, that use electricity. It was in the Business Magazine, for the five hundred kilowatt, the grid, for the five acre solar panels at the town highway garage, it's enough to service fully something like sixty homes. Well, just do the math. Weathersfield has sixteen hundred.
I do, but I'll wait till you're done. I'm saying, solar on the roof is the way to go, individual solar.
Oh.
Here's, here's where Fuller lived.
He, he'd have kind of
No, Zagra, uh, going down Maple Street, right?
Okay.
Okay? Here's that house, uh, his, um, his father, mother.
Love you, Ginger.
That's the house.
Do I
Fuller's.
That's the first time I've ever
That's where Fuller lived, in the eighteen hundreds.
I cannot believe I came out of your mouth.
But, I called her Ginger, instead of Mrs. Winberg, I'm just, I mean, she was my teacher.
Can I update you, can I update you what, I just got showed? No. Ben, I flew Ben home last week, and he, he and I marched up to the cemetery to see my father. Well, he drifts off into the Grouse Cemetery, and we find two or three headstones from eighteen hundred and something that says Fuller on them. I didn't have any idea what that meant. So, I called Ginger to ask what the heck was going on, because in the Grouse Cemetery, they were dug up from the Army Corps land to move, and she just said that they lived in a house, so the, the irony to this whole thing was that they said they came from Plymouth, Massachusetts. Well, my grandfather's father was from around that area, his name was Frank or something, or Frederick or whatever, and this grave says, son of Frank.
Oh, wow.
What the heck?
That's really cool.
So
Really neat.
So, I don't know what it means or doesn't mean, but she just had the thing saying that where the person lived was in, down on Maple Street, uh, where Wes Hazeltine's father lived or something. See, they tore all those houses down when they moved the whole
All right, that's a great story, yeah. Okay. Moving right along, item seven, uh, fiscal year twenty-three tax rate discussion, here we go. Let the fun begin. Brandon?
Yeah, so in the last meeting, um, that we had regarding the tax rate, we talked about how the grand list is, is decreasing. Um, and the board requested that Nate Starter come, he's online tonight to answer any questions. He did update the four eleven today, um, and he has some good news. I'm gonna let him share that with you. Nate?
Um, yes, thank you, Brandon. So, we did make a few changes today, um, by way of, well, the biggest one is, there is a solar project that we, let me back up, about three weeks ago, the district advisor through, at PVNR, that's assigned to the town of Weathersfield, reached out to Barb and I, and wanted to know where we were at. They showed that there are, by way of application, six solar projects within the town that, um, could possibly address and, and need to have a value put on them. So, there's a, a form, PVNR state form, um, we tracked down as best we could possible owners of these sites. Barb mailed out six forms, and last week, we received one back. And immediately, we sent that to the district advisor. The district advisor, through their solar utility valuing tool that they use statewide, came back with a value on that property. So, we created a parcel and put that value on that parcel. So, the, the, the number that Brendan is referring to, that I think you all probably got last week, has changed. Your, I think, so we're, I'm talking, your total municipal grand list, uh, number was three million, three hundred fifteen thousand, nine oh six and change, uh, after the changes today, which included the addition of a new parcel. Now, your total municipal grand list is three million, three eighteen, nine thirty-six, so, um, it, it did go back up a little. The bottom line, I think, is what the question is, is why did it go down from last year? Well, your biggest reduction came from the Vermont Transco property, I believe also, maybe it's referred to as Velco. Uh, it's a utility, it's their substation and transmission lines and all that. That saw a three point three, almost three point four million dollar decrease in its, in its valuation. That comes from the That comes from the, again, the utility providing information to the state. The state putting it in their utility valuation tool. And it's similar, I guess the easiest way to explain it is it's like the town of Weatherfield chooses or has voted to do personal property. So it's similar to that. You, we mail out uh, forms to folks that have personal property. They send in that their depreciated value of their equipment inside of their mom and pop bakery is X amount of money. You apply that as a value. So the similar same thing to these utilities. Utility provides whatever their values are for, for, in many towns, rate production. Um, I don't, the, the value for the utility lines. Anyhow, that value is then adjusted by your CLA. So for twenty twenty-two, the value on that property uh, was adjusted by your CLA of twenty twenty-one of point nine three. So it was adjusted by seven percent. This year, the total value of the property to start with went down just because of more depreciation. You know what? The calculation on their end is something way beyond the rest of us to even know how it happens. So the, first of all, their, their starting number did go down. Um, I think I had that at one point something million. So then you take that one point something million drop in their starting value. And now you apply twenty twenty-two's CLA of eighty-eight percent. So now you reduce that by twelve percent. So that's where you end up with a starting value of almost fifty-five million. Minus twelve percent gets you the fifty-one, five million assessment value for that property. Three point four million is the reduction on that property this year. Uh, it's, it's out of our control. So we did, and I, I didn't look this up. We can, I can get Brendan the number. Um, we mailed out a lot. I think eighty, a hundred, maybe notices of change of values. Those come from permit inspection. Well, anything that caused a value change, mostly through permit inspections. And, and, and captured values on those. You know, somebody built a new house, somebody did an addition, whatever. We, we go back out. So you had a three point, almost three point four million dollar reduction in one property. It's pretty tough to make up just by taxing people's sheds and additions and houses. Um, in that mailing, we mailed out notices to properties that sold in twenty twenty-one um, that had sales prices higher than the assessed value that indicated some level of change. Now, by statute, you got to be careful with that because you cannot spot value and you cannot sales chase. So we sent it out to everybody that fell within that category. And we, we found a few that said, yep, come on out. And, you know, so we were able to capture value from these sales. Because I think your big question is, is why are we not getting the value on a house that sold for six hundred thousand when it's previously on the books for four hundred thousand? It's a good question. You should be looking at those things. Uh, but the answer to that is, is you capture those through permitting. And if not, if, if I rehab the interior of my house and I added an apartment to my basement, I, I believe in Town of Weatherfield, you don't need a permit for that. So those are values that get added to the property unbeknownst to the town. That's why you reappraise. You capture those values by reappraisal. Um, and that's why the state in two thousand nineteen changed their rules of when the state's going to require a town to reappraise. You fall below eighty-five percent, you go above a hundred and fifteen percent on your CLA or your COD is greater than twenty, you'll be under orders from the state to perform a reappraisal to get you back in line because you're way too far out of whack. Weatherfield's been trending, just like every state, most towns in this state have been trending obviously out of whack of their, of their assessed values and their sale prices. Um, I believe I looked up and found the last reappraisal was two thousand five, two thousand six, you know, so seventeen years. Two thousand eight, okay. So still, what's that, fifteen years? Um, fourteen, fifteen years. It's late, I can't do that math. Either way, um, yeah, so that's where we're at. So a big negative along with a lot of hard work to get some positives. And it shakes out that way. I mean, it's hard to know when that kind of a valuation change is going to happen on these utilities. Um, and, and I see it in other towns that have substantial valuations on, on, on Velco, um, Great River Hydro is another one, you know. Um, their valuations are going down. So I don't, I don't know what other specific questions you might have. I can answer any if you have any.
Me.
I, I just got one really quick one and then I'll turn it over to you, Dave. Um, i- i- in this process, is there any kind of notification that, that the town can receive that to let us know this is happening? Like a month ago, two months ago, three months ago? You know, I don't know where this process starts or, or what, but I just want to know why, is, is there any communication between the state and the town that this is happening?
Yep, so, um, I could look at the exact, uh, letter that the town received on all of the utilities and find you the date that it was received by the town. It happens right around the April first time period, you know, the cutoff of when you have to have your values done by April first. I, I don't think it was there. I don't think the town, I don't think we got it before April first. Um, but we did receive it, I'm going to say at least, you know, easily a month ago, yes.
Dave, go.
Well, Nate, was the, was the, uh, are you saying that it was not, it wasn't the weather, so you didn't have anything to do with this? Plugging in numbers or anything to Velco, right? Nothing. You had, you had nothing.
No, it's a state-generated value.
Okay, so you facility, that it was not the Weatherfield business tax or whatever you want to call it. I mean, I'll, I'll defer that because I got it all wrong a year ago. I got chastised for that. But the Weatherfield has a, whatever it is you want to call it.
Personal property tax.
Okay, it, that, this, this reduction for Velco was not that.
No.
It wasn't equipment.
It was not part of what the town of Weatherfield values personal property on. It, it is not. It is a, it's a utility value that generated by the state.
So do you think, from your experience, that this will become a trend? So when we get ready to do the next budget, that it could go down again another million or two? That's question number one.
So the biggest reason it reduced so much is because they're applying your CLA to the value. So they're taking the fifty-eight million dollar, fifty-six million dollar value, whatever it's, the starting value is, and they're applying your CLA to it.
Well, but, but we're, we're not all soothsayers. And, and as a matter of fact, the, the, if you look at any of the economic things, you watch the business stuff like I do a lot. Uh, when the interest rate rises, that's going to start bringing house sales unaffordable because how can you keep, you're not going to be able to pay seven percent interest on half a million dollar homes. If you are, you've got a lot more money than I do. So that's going to force some of these prices in the houses down in order to coordinate the sale. I mean, it ha, it's happened before in history when interest rates rise. Um, so will this notification at this late date also affect the school tax rate? Of the grand list dropping instead of, it has to, right?
Bear with me here.
I mean, it's pretty significant because any other year we go up, you know, we one half of one percent or whatever. And I did the rough calculation. I saw the documents that you gave us and you, and, and I tried to get through this at the last meeting. And it was something like last year's increase in the grand list was fifty-five hundred dollars. And I told everybody it wasn't fifty-five hundred because it was missing a couple of zeros. And I know what you're talking about, but other people don't. But in, in this case, you estimated that we were going down ninety-nine hundred. So if last year's increase, which was what I talked about, went up by one half of one percent, then it's conceivable to say that this grand list that you just gave us is going down by one percent, one full percent, which is pretty significant for budgeting.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I didn't do that. So your twenty-three grand list at the three, three, one, eight, nine, three, six, compared to your twenty-two grand list at the three, three, two, five, five oh six, yeah, I, if, if, if that equals one percent, then sure, I didn't do the math. But the, but the difference from that, from twenty-two to twenty-three in your taxable value is the six thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. If that's one percent, then sure, I, I don't know. I, I.
Yeah, and I don't know the new number that you just gave us. So, so, so help us out all here in the meeting tonight. So, so what was the FY twenty-one grand list? And now you've got, you've got new information tonight that's going to be the twenty-two grand list, right? So what is the difference? The best information that you have right now. What is the?
So, so the grand list we finalized today is technically called your twenty-three grand list. So that one is the three million, three eighteen, nine thirty-six. Three million, three twenty-five, five oh six.
And who, who can do the math that fast?
Twenty-one was, twenty-one was three million, three nineteen, nine forty-three.
I can't. I didn't do it. So I don't. Oh, so it's a little bit, so it's a little better than the information you gave us at the last meeting. Because your last meeting you gave us, it was like ninety-nine hundred or something. So now it's, so now it's shrunk again by a quarter of a percent.
Yeah, and that comes from adding that value for that solar field that we put in there today. Uh, it was almost a half a million dollar assessment.
Can I ask a quick question? Were those, you talked about six solar, uh, projects or something for the town already, correct? Uh, that you were, that you, that you sent stuff out and you got one back roughly. Are those personal, like smaller ones or are those the large industrial?
These are all the five hundred and above. And, and actually, so what the district advisor did was sent me a list of solar sites based off of, um, certificate of public good applications. So she doesn't know really if they're up and running, what size they ended up being. So on that list, there are two sites that are under the five hundred kilowatt size that I, I believe the law still, rule still says that we can't value anyways. So out of that, there's four that are over five hundred kilowatt.
It, so is there, would that not fall under? So I'm, I'm confused here about why you only got one then. If we have six, then why would you target one? And that, that's probably not right, but, um.
You didn't target. I mailed a letter to every one of them.
But isn't it their responsibility to get back to you, the other five then? That would be the first question that I'd ask. I'd say, wait a minute, then I'm going, I'm going to find out the five then. If you got the information, if you got the, the, the wherewithal and a legal thing saying that you could tax one, then I would think that you need to follow up on the other five. But, but more, more to the point, would it not also, if you, if you didn't and it was landed, would you not then qualify it as equipment under, under our Vermont? And maybe there's an exception with solar, I don't know. But then wouldn't it be, uh, similar to an unlanded mobile home where it would be a million dollars worth of panels that's providing as a business, unlanded, similar to something?
Yeah, I, I don't know. My guess is the state has chosen to value them by their generation that amounts. And that's what that, that's where the state came back with the values based off of, of, of the, the generation, the amount of power they're generating.
Number one, do, do you have a list of those six facilities?
I do. Let's, let me just back up again. So there were six that she put on there based off of purely that she saw a case number. We now know that two of them, two of them are under five hundred. So now we're down to four. Found out today that two of them, one's not begun to be, were installed and one of them was not generating power by January one, twenty twenty-two. So we're really only dealing with two existing up and running solar sites. And we got one notice back.
Sites, where are they located?
Uh, they are.
I'm thinking the Town Highway Garage is, is number three that wasn't producing power on January one.
That's correct. So the other one is labeled as Weatherfield GLC Solar. And the other one is Weatherfield Solar Partners LLC. And I believe they are. One of them, uh, hold on, I got it here.
Well, I only know of two five hundred sitting active sites right now. That's the, the Town Highway Garage and, and one over.
Well, and that very well may be. Like I said, the district advisor, the district advisor gave me a list off of, off of an application. So if an application came in and, and it was, had a potential of five hundred, but it didn't end up being five hundred, then that's another part of that tracking down process that we need to do.
Others is the permit for the, um, the, um, transfer facility. It hasn't, hasn't been completed yet.
That's correct. Yeah.
I think, I mean, they, they've done their diligence.
Yeah, they have, they, they have.
So has, has the grand list been finalized today, Nate?
Yes.
It's done.
It's been finalized today. Let me just clarify, anything that happens now comes in as an errors and omissions. We could need to reduce it. We could need to increase it. But it, it is finalized now today. Um, and the district advisor did advise me that if we do receive the, the form that we mailed back out to any of these, and they can be valued, we can apply them to that grand list as an error and omissions.
It's not going to matter because we're talking about other things to do. I'm talking about getting the grand list to buy within two more weeks to set the tax rate.
It, it's in as of, for that purpose, it's in today, yes.
Okay, I, um, my other question was, could you really quickly, uh, hopefully, eh, eh, explain to this board? We're, we're going to probably be grappled with a reappraisal decision. Could you explain, uh, what causes the CLA to rise and fall quickly?
The CLA is the the calculation between your, uh, sales, total sales over a three-year time period that the state does a sales study on divided by your assessed values. So it's your sales divided by your value gets you your CLA. So if your total sales is twenty million and your, and your total listed value is ten million, then you have a CLA of point five, or fifty percent.
So there's no, so there's no magical number, and this is where I always kind of was fascinated by this. So in other words, if five houses sell in Weatherfield out of sixteen hundred and fifty, that that would drive that mechanism regardless of whether only five houses sold?
No, but you're not having five.
No, no, I know that, but I'm just throwing that out there because it's like anything else. You need a certain amount of actual closings to have bearing on a formula, I would think.
Sure, and that's why they do three years.
Oh, yeah, okay, three years. But, because as you say, houses this year have been like, some of them have doubled what the property card is.
You can't even find a place to rent in this town right now.
Sure you can.
Any, any, so any other questions? Everybody?
Contact me later.
Kids.
Yeah.
Any, any questions? Dave, any, any further? John, Anne Marie, anybody? Any, any questions? Okay, so that brings us to tax rate discussion. We have the grand list. Are we ready to set the tax rate?
I don't see how tonight because it's a new number. I don't know whether you have it printed it.
Well, now, now this, now the state has to provide us more information for the school. The homestead and the non-homestead values. And that usually happens, I'm hoping to have them for the first meeting in July.
They should be any time now.
And if I don't have them, then, um, we'll have to have a special meeting between the first and the second meeting in July, but we should have them.
Okay, and other than that, everything else is in order to?
Yeah, as, as soon as we have those two numbers, we plug them into the sheet that you have right here. Those are the two missing numbers. We can also calculate local education once they give us those. And then boom, you guys have the numbers. You can set the rate.
Okay, so we'll keep, we'll keep tabs on that.
Thank you, Nate.
Nate, thank you very much for your time tonight. Sorry to keep you waiting so long.
No, it's fine. Anytime, you know, reach out through email or through Barb or something if any of anybody has any questions.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Uh, so no further, no further questions or discussion on tax? Uh, so no further, no further questions or discussion on tax tax rate discussion at this time? That'll be on the agenda for our first meeting in July?
Yes.
Which is the fifth?
The fifth. It's a Tuesday. We're gonna have to move it to Tuesday. And actually. The board should do that tonight under any other business if.
Okay. Other business? Uh, Perkinsville's got any wastewater feasibility study? Go, Brandon.
All right, so we have a guest here tonight from Otter Creek Engineering. Is he still here?
Not offended that everyone left.
Thank you for your patience.
Maybe they were offended.
So let me just run through. How we got to where we are right now. Um. We talked to Tom Brown at the state and we talked about different types of funding. Possibilities through ARPA. Um, and the water district decided to do that engineering so we can do the construction project over at um over in Escutney. And he's he's the selected. Engineering company to do that work. Um. Through the state. They have a program. Um. And it's a it's a one. The way that they do it is through a hundred percent forgivable loan program. You might be able to explain that a little better. Um, and to go through that process, the first step is to advertise an R F Q for an engineering company. And it has to be advertised. With the template that they give you. So we use their template, the state's template. We advertised an R F Q. Um, and we received respondents. We went through and evaluated those respondents with the regional planning. Um. And. The Prudential Committee. And then from there. Um, we reached out to the state. Uh, actually directly to Mr. Brown at the state. To vet the selected. Engineering company. Um, and he said that he's done work with Otter Creek before. Um, and that he was comfortable with our selection. Um, so from there, we interviewed Otter Otter Creek and looked at a timeline. Um, they came in. With the Prudential Committee and interviewed for the water district project and so forth. And now we're looking forward to. Um. Going through the wastewater feasibility study for both villages. Um, and I'll pass it over to.
Sure. Um, so, good evening. My name is Zach Craig, Jewish with Otter Creek Engineering. Um. So the the study before you for the villages is an ARPA, a state ARPA-run program, essentially the village wastewater initiatives. Essentially, the story goes is one of our former governors went into a small village, asked to use the bathroom in the village store and the. Um, the owner had to inform him that he wasn't allowed to let the public use the bathrooms. Um, which uh he saw as a big problem, both from a growth standpoint, but also um longs long-term sustainability standpoint for the villages. Um, so one of the initiatives that came out of ARPA was to incentivize um the planning process through this. Um, these are loans, but they're forgivable loans. They don't use the word grant. Um, EPA and um the Fed do not let them use the word grant, but it is a forgivable loan. Um, so after you went through the selection process, um, we have provided the town with a scope of services. And associated budget and agreement um for the town to consider. And to be included as part of the loan application that gets submitted to the funding program. So they will review our scope of services, make sure that they are in agreement with it. It meets all their funding requirements. This is not an agreement that the board has to sign in any way. Um, that gets included as part of the loan application. And because it's a loan application, it does go through an underwriting process. So we'll go through. The municipal bond bank's uh underwriting process and they will process this like a loan. Um, it is a reimbursement. Process. So you will have to pay for services, then the services will be reimbursed through a reimbursement process through the state. Um, but the. Uh, the unique part of this through the ARPA program is that you get a determination on your subsidy before you sign any agreement to the forward with a consultant. So go through the underwriting process. They say, yep, you you guys are approved for this loan. And here's a letter saying that this is a hundred percent forgivable before you proceed forward. Um, so that the town knows on day one, okay, total out-of-pocket for us is zero. It's just a reimbursement um process to go through. Um, so that's kind of the finer points of the funding application and the agreement that you have in your packet uh tonight. It's a draft agreement from us. Uh, to do the study for each village. Um, it is it is broken into each village. The report will include each village. Um, and then the associated loan application, which has all the pertinent town information. Uh, that the underwriter needs uh related to the loan. Um, so that's kind of what's in front of you tonight. And I'm certainly here to ask or answer any questions that the board has related to the project in general. The application in front of you guys or any manuals that you have uh pertinent to to the study.
My first question would be the what's the anticipated turnaround on uh as he just stated, we have to have the funds upfront and then we get reimbursed. So what is the anticipated turnaround on those that funding is? Does it have any budget implications? I guess that question is for Brandon.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm not completely sure on the anticipated. Turnaround. How long does it take? How long would it take for you guys to get the work done?
Well, so let me let me take that in chunks. So first off, uh, the underwriting process right now is anywhere between two to three months. Normally it's six to eight weeks. As with everything else, it's being delayed. We're seeing three, possibly four months just for the underwriting process to say, hey, you guys have been given four of this. Um, as far as the overall process to go through the reporting and do all of that. Um, there's a very specific process that needs to go through that includes uh multiple community outreach standpoints. Um, that will take anywhere between three to four months, probably on a whole to get it all the way through. Here's a report that you guys can decide what to do with from there. Um, to speak to your point specifically, um. That's a question for how the town, where the town wants to choose to get the money from, and then where they're gonna take the money that they get from the fund and insert it back in. Typically, it's it's the general fund that it's taken out of because you can move money easier, but that's obviously town by town and how you guys set up your budgets. Um, but the reimbursement process is about two weeks on average. So that it's a two-week timeframe total that you need to have those funds.
Two two-week timeframe. From when?
So you.
Because that's what's gonna have the.
So so you, so I give you an invoice.
Yeah.
You pay an invoice.
Yeah.
Once you have that paid invoice with the canceled check, you give it to the state of Vermont. Two to three weeks later, you have that money back in your possession.
So it's a month. Month turnaround.
But that all starts with after the approval process, which I think was three to four months.
Wait, we don't pay them upfront, so they complete the plan. Then they send us an invoice. Then we pay the invoice. Yeah, we submit it and then the turnaround's two weeks, so it all happens in thirty days.
So this is why I posed this question to you.
Yeah.
You you you've got this covered. You know what's going on and there's no budget implication.
There would, there wouldn't be a budget implication.
Allegedly.
And, you know, of course, uh. Steve Hyer would look at cash flow and and so forth. Um, so based, you know, depending on what your decision is tonight, then I'll have a discussion with him. About when that when that time comes up.
Okay.
Which looks like it would be. Sometime. In March of next year. Based on this?
I I would say that's reasonable with the state's involvement. There are uh milestones that they need to be involved with with the review. Uh, the review of the study itself at thirty percent and at ninety percent. There's also community uh milestones that need to be met before. We can't invoice sixty percent of what the cost is if we haven't reached that milestone within the in the report study. I will note that the invoicing actually does occur on a monthly basis, but it's based on the percentage of what we've completed to date. So it won't be one invoice at the end of the report.
Okay.
It will be invoicing as you go through, but that reimbursement process can happen every thirty days. So it is every thirty days you can set up reimbursement to the state.
So, all right, so now moving away from money. Um, a feasibility study. What are the things you're looking at?
So, um. It's obviously unique to each village. Each village has its own challenges uh and its own opportunities. But essentially what they're looking to, what we're looking to provide you guys is your options to. Decentralize or uh centralize by decentralizing all of your individual um septic system. So in these small villages. Typically, what happens is small lots. Got a well, got a septic system. Some are old, some are new. And what you have is a combination of if anyone was gonna plan it to be this way, this would not be a good plan. So. Um, I think that one of the examples that's used is the town of Warren. Uh, so the town of Warren twenty years ago had this issue right in downtown the village. They had failed septic systems left and right. People's wells were getting contaminated by their neighbors' failed septic systems. They went and did a study and said, okay, where can we take all of this wastewater from the village? And do we have somewhere within a reasonable vicinity to get rid of this? In that particular case, it ended up being by the school. They developed a essentially a community wastewater system. Everything gets pumped up to the school, gets disposed of there. Um, in this particular scenario, it would be all the potential alternatives that are reasonable. And then going further into each one of those alternatives to look at the financial implications, all of those things. So that we can ultimately come to you with apples and apples comparisons of potential alternatives. That you as as a community should consider and have a level playing ground. So you know that alternative one. Is the same as alternative two by a, you know, life cycle cost, total cost, bring it all down to a dollar to say, the dollar here is equal to what over on this side. Um, so for Scutton, for example. As crazy as it sounds, we probably will make a phone call over to Windsor and say. Hey, you know, I I'm not sure anyone wants to do a five-mile force main over to uh to Windsor to to uh discharge wastewater, but. If they were so inclined, do you have the capacity to seep that much wastewater at the plant? Would that be an adverse issue created at the plant? Do you have the ability to do that? That's one alternative. Another alternative would be where in the. Where within the village are there opportunities to say? Hey, if we did a community system down here, we might be able to get everybody's wastewater to this one location. And now that frees up. Um, expansion possibilities, use changing uses, those sorts of things.
Does the study also include or it sounds like it's it's focused on one thing, community-based. Uh, and and certainly that it's the community. That that needs attention. But is there? Uh, within this study, um, individual plans?
So it it can be crafted somewhat specific to your situation. So say, for instance, that makes more sense in Scutney than it does Perkinsville. I'm not making any declarations, but.
Okay.
Can, we've had certain communities wanna look at, hey, we've got a town range and we want the town hall. That's really what we're looking for. If we can get something more for that, we can tie in some more homes, great, but. We from a community standpoint are just looking to address these certain things. So that's part of the initial outreach. Is having kickoff meetings, having some outreach to say, what are the local concerns? Because you guys know that better than we do.
Uh, and um. O- obviously, a community. Uh, based system i- is is a huge investment for the community.
Yep.
Um, and and I think when it comes to this board making a decision. Uh, it would be real good. Oh, sorry. Uh, I think it, I mean, um. How many, I I don't know how many different types of private systems are there are in the state of Vermont. A and R issues those permits. Um, is that something we can get so that we have for information so that we know what we're what we're looking at and what what's available? Uh, to 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 weigh all of the apples in this cart?
Sure. So that's that's part of what the report is actually. Developing and pulling together are what are all of the options that you guys should be considering? And whether, oh, I find a field over here and I can take the entire village and that's great. It's. But that's not what you guys are looking to actually solve. And it's it's something more specific to that. That's where you take all of that information and go, okay, this is great, but we don't wanna go this far because we're not sure we can afford it. We wanna do some interim sort of half measure. Or we wanna address something very specific within the village rather than a entire village um sort of solution, wastewater solution. So it can be crafted that way. Um. We we did a similar study in Highgate. And there they were very specific. They wanted this to be able to develop one commercial property. And it ended up morphing into, well, here's how you can serve two-thirds of your village community and solve the same problem that you were looking for. But now you've spread it over sixty-three users instead of one user as far as the related costs. So that's part of what the report will do is it will break it down to the user-based cost to say, okay. This is how, this is the community that it serves on a user-based standpoint. That's what the the dollar sense cost is to everybody. And here are your life cycle costs for twenty years. So when you do have to, when the bill comes due to replace it. This is this is the cost associated with doing that. That's that's kind of built into that, right?
Paul?
Yeah, uh, two things. I just, as a board member and a planning commissioner member, I wanna say that. I I don't wanna specify one thing. I wanna look townwide. The whole thing, which I think most people are probably gonna be, but I wanna see that. For everything. I think this is good. It it really, a lot of people were talking about it in town. A lot of people were here saying that. We gotta figure out stuff about wastewater and you gotta do that. And the phone calls that Brandon made to Windsor and Springfield and. Found out that that wasn't feasible. It wasn't enough for 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 everyone. Um, so by getting the grant, this was another good thing. By leveraging that grant to the water district. Um, we were able to to get this. So so that's important. Um. Maybe it's in here and I maybe I just totally glazed over. What's the total price that we're gonna have to worry about here?
It's uh, oh, it's just over forty-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, and yeah, that's so that's you're from a reimbursable standpoint, yes, you will have to.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we'll lose forty-two for a period of time.
Correct.
And that'll get that information and then.
Over a period of time.
Yeah, yeah.
Monthly.
Hey, can I just clarify that though? So, you know, if you take that forty-two thousand and divide it by the nine months, there would be an invoice one month, and then we'd be reimbursed the next month and then invoice one month and reimburse the next month.
And and you can't break it up evenly divided by nine because it's.
Yeah.
By percentage of whatever's completed at the time the invoice is created. Paul, finish up.
And and the second, the second question is. How does this help the town going forward? So we do all the study. We do everything and you say, wow, um, septic in your town is gonna cost five hundred million dollars. And we say, oh, crap, we we never afford that. If we wanna go look for money or grants, how does your plan and your stuff help get any of that or does it not?
So it does. It it actually puts you in a position to access further money, whether that's additional planning work that you wanna do, whether you actually move forward into design, even going into construction.
So it's certified study enough that we can use that and go through and say, listen.
Yes.
Here's what they came up with. We need help with this and, okay.
Yeah, the revolving loan fund program is paying for this and they. Their whole goal with having you do this is hopefully that you're going to use their money for design and that they're gonna use their money for construction. That's that's. Their hope in trying to incentivize you going through this process.
Brandon?
And one thing, and I just wanna clarify this, when we had met at one point, we had talked about how there had been discussion with Windsor and they had said, let's say they've said no. And you said, I don't know who's you, but someone had mentioned that if. There was a way that you could present it to Windsor that it would not be, they think one thing, but they haven't actually had the engineering or the the plan that's presented before them that it'd be taken care of.
That's.
Because the, my biggest concern. My biggest concern why is the fact that we have an area that is in our source protection plan. And we have septic systems that are leaching eight hundred feet away from our wells. And. It goes from there to multitude of developments that actually set within that source protection plan. And it's been something that was a concern even prior to there being a fire district. This has always been a, it has always been a concern because there would have been a state of emergency when it was privately owned that we could have done nothing with for our water and our water. Comes to our town and our school and and people and it. So I I do know that part of this would be so that we could look at different areas, I'm assuming.
Oh, yeah, so.
To protect certain areas, I'm.
I absolutely. And and it can be, you know, I use the example of, oh, you find one system and everything can go there. It may not end, uh, it may not end up that way. It might be, okay, here's a small system over here and that can get this cluster over here and get stuff out of the source protection area. And now we need to find something over here. It can kind of get get to that extent. I will say. The funding is limited to the village at the village district as it's been drawn. So that's that's one thing that needs to be specific is. The project is not intended to serve people outside the village district as it's been drawn.
But we have two, we have. But we have to, we have.
Yeah, Perkinsville, yeah, you're right. So each one of those is its own situation. I think to your point related to the conversations with Windsor and Springfield, the intent would be is this is how you go to them and say, here's turn key, how you're going to have a bunch of users. And you don't have the capital cost associated with getting all of those users. So here's how, let's say, direct benefit to you so long as you don't have any capital improvements that are necessary to accept these users. On your end, it's, do you have enough users to incur that capital cost to get that all to Windsor?
Dave?
What do you want?
I don't know, I figure you must have something.
Yeah, I think Wendy has a conflict of interest here. I think she's got a financial interest in, in a, what she just described about we and things like that, so.
We're not voting on anything.
Well, but.
No, I wanna address that. No, that's fine, I wanna address that. One, I don't have a conflict of interest. I just want, I do wanna make that clear. I do not have a conflict of interest and I do not know how that would financially benefit me.
Okay, but, but.
No, no, I just, I do wanna make that clear.
When you said we and our water.
Okay, okay, I will bring it back to we. We, when we privately owned the water system, prior to it becoming a fire district, there was a concern about the wells that are now owned by the fire district. So I'm just saying that that was always a concern.
And the town has alleviated that problem by securing the three drilled wells at the Kelly Farm for backup.
Not the town.
Well, the town dead through the Vermont Land Trust.
No.
Well, then you gotta talk to John Cohen because he came to see me about all that when that, when that whole transaction took place. So that happened. Not even talking about the Smith Water System. I'm talking about the other three wells that have been secured for a backup that are drilled already. Two hundred gallons a minute. They're not even in service right now.
But, but.
But this, you want me to comment about the, the septic, the study? Okay, this is about how hard it is to get Weathersfield together, okay? I'm hearing about a loan that might not get paid back or nine months. I'm out of that, I'm not, I'm not up for that. I wanna know a lot more about it. This is the first meeting that I've been presented. And you know my golden rule, I like to see stuff before I vote on it on the next meeting. The second thing is, what are you gonna do with this study? Because we've studied things to death before in town, including the fire departments. And then we never do anything. So we just alleviated a problem right now through the zoning by not enacting half acre lots. So that inadvertently subdues the issue with septic by not allowing half acre lots in the villages. That helps that. Second of all, what are you gonna do? Condemn everybody's existing one that is perfectly good in order to put them onto a system? Third, we're only talking about, what are we talking about? Tops for a top end of homes either in the Perkinsville Village or in the Scotty Village compared to the total homes in Weathersfield? So grants are wonderful. Grants lead to annual operating costs that are borne by all the residents. So guess what I?
I just, one other thing pertaining to the water and the wells. The, the other wells that are secured, regardless if they're secured, are they hooked up to the system and the cost of money that it would cost in order to actually hook them up to the system that already exists in this town?
They're not hooked up right now.
Correct. I'm talking about the cost that it would take if we were in a place where there was an emergency.
I view it as a very positive thing, what happened as far as to have the backup to the wells.
Well, it's fine that we have the backup. But what I'm saying is if we don't have something in place, if there was ever a chance that we had a grant that we could have something in place, whether it would be, so maybe we have to look at the fact that down the road, we're gonna have to use those backup wells. Because now we do know regardless, it's not, it's not one place that's in that source protection. There's a lot of places. And the, and the place that you think is financially benefiting from it isn't even the one that's most important. It's a development of privately owned homes that's set just within eight hundred feet, some of them, from that, those wells. So if you wanna use those other wells someday down the road regardless, it costs a lot of money just to run some pipes just a short distance. So somewhere along the line, there has to be, there has to be some sort of plan in place.
Okay.
And maybe this isn't the study and if people don't want it, that's one thing.
Well, but I think, I, I think this discussion is about wastewater.
It is about wastewater.
And I can see where that has a, an impact on the protection zone or the protection area and the wells that are within that protection area. Let's, let's stay on the discussion of the grant and the wastewater.
But I also do believe that the grant for Springfield, that those things need to be looked at also. I'm not, I'm not just for a Scotty or one area. I do tend to be somebody that does look at the things that would cost the town, whether it's what building we should use for ARPA or what we should do. Yes, I tend to look at where the crisis is may fall. But I'm just saying that I do also wanna see what Springfield, if there was a way to leverage something so that Perkinsville could benefit. I do believe that it's not just one area. I'm just saying that, you know, I would be concerned about the wells.
Paul?
I just, I wanted to hint, Dave asked it a little bit before I got to it. But we did, we did village district designation at the planning commission. It's not the same as what he's talking about or is it the same as what he's talking about? We did, we did a village district designation so that you could get different funding for somebody needed to fix up the old buildings or whatever. And it was a very, the villages here and that was like, well, it was only six hundred feet here and eight hundred feet here. Is that what we're talking about when you say village district or no? Were you looking at the map, whatever the map says for village?
So I'm looking at what the map says.
Okay, so, so, so Scotty Village, okay, based on this, then that's fine. So today's point, I would like to just have an idea of how that affect percentages of people. I mean, we can figure that out too and understand that. Cause you know, I mean, if it's, I don't know what, how many residents. But Perkinsville definitely, I think, there are much tighter density right there, I think.
Well, I, for me, the question that comes out of a lot of that is if you, if you look at Perkinsville and you're just talking about the village and I don't know, how many, how many lots are there? How many have, you know, either old or failing systems?
Or shared.
Or shared.
But that's a study.
Like Mr. Fuller said.
Or growth.
Yes, yeah, it's, yeah. Like Mr. Fuller said, are you gonna condemn some in order to, you know, finance this thing? Is there a cost to every taxpayer in town to create a system to service just those in Perkinsville? How does that all break down? Now, those are, those are some of the questions I have. You know, I mean, I, I would, I would lean more towards protecting, you know, doing something on the protection zone around the, you know, where we have a huge aquifer and wells that are, that are existing than I would private lots in the middle of a village that it's not really. Yeah, I don't wanna see the village go to hell, but I mean, at the same time, I've got my, I've got it my own septic system. And why do I need to pay for somebody else's elephant in the room?
A lot of you are eager to ask, there are questions that we've been asking being a resident of Perkinsville, but we have no answers. We're like blowing in the wind. What I do know is that everybody probably in the fifties, nineteen forties were pumping their wastewater into the river.
Mm-hmm.
It was cool. It just was there.
Just keep your mouth closed when you were swimming.
Yep. And then the Fed or the state or something came and said, no, you can't do this anymore. Everybody around the same time scrambled to put septic systems in. Or if they didn't have enough land, they shared septic system. Sometimes the leach field went to a third property. And what's gonna happen is all of them basically fail around the same time. And that's money off the grand list. It's terrible anguish to the people who own houses that they can't win them, they're helping them.
Let me ask you how you get the money off the grand list? Why is it money off the grand list?
Property value.
You've got buildings right now that are vacant because they can't do anything with them.
Yeah. And when they sell, the property values are lower because they have to share septic systems or wells with each other. I mean, all that stuff is taken into consideration. The thing about money on this is that ARPA funds, for better or for worse, the Fed's lost a lot of money, one time money that we probably won't see again. Even though they don't call it a grant, you know, they're calling it a forgivable loan, at least we'll have some answers. And we don't have to go forward. We could say, oh, it's gonna cost two point four million just to do the, the actual center. And people are gonna say, no, we're not gonna do that. Or they're gonna say, the report could just say, well, you have so many users who want to buy into this. Therefore, it's gonna cost those individual units that put in the system this much. And if only so many wanna do it, here's another possible alternative, a smaller system that could do to ten, fifteen houses. That one, I, you know, I don't know. I know that there are regional planning, regional septic systems. I don't know how they work, I know that they're fixed. But this is what a study would give us some answers to instead of where, I lived there twenty years and at least fifteen of those years, people are in tender quotes about if their septic system fails. Because as we know, the state of Vermont is very protective of where the septic system's going, how they're engineered and they come down and the spectrum and stuff. That's forty thousand dollars you're looking at if you own a half an acre, which is part of the village designation. How can you anticipate anybody even using the general score if there's no septic system there? There's no, there's several businesses there that wouldn't be able to go in a small area.
You know, I hear all that and you are really not gonna like what I'm gonna say. And, and, and that is what you said. The state made these rules, you know, and these rules are having an effect on historic settlements. And both of you have been in the state senate or house. Where do these rules come from?
They, they, they come from a need to protect, protect public health overall. It, it, it's really a public health issue. So I, I guess to kind of go back to the zoning conversation, and I don't, I don't want to go back to the zoning conversation. Go back to the zoning conversation for a second. The report will allow you guys to make informed decisions. It will not require you to make a decision to say, hey, we gotta go in one direction or another. It will give you the information to say, you know what, this doesn't work. And this isn't something that we can afford to do and it doesn't have enough users. We don't know how we're gonna pay for it when we need to rebuild it in twenty years. There may be any number of reasons that come out of it. But, but, but to her point, this allows you to at least collect that information. Some of the stuff that goes on in this, we do a survey of the village. How many people are interested in this? How, how many people do, you know, and we get ten, twenty percent response here. Not gonna get much more response than what you were talking about earlier.
But push forward.
Right.
But, but, but there is, there is the opportunity to at least collect some information to allow you to make a more informed decision than you otherwise could as it stands right now.
Paul?
So I, just so we can maybe move along, I'm, I'm for it because it sounds like all the money's coming back regardless of, it might take a few months, but it's guaranteed, it's guaranteed, it's what they said. I know some people might say that everything in life's not guaranteed. Maybe the bottom government falls out in another week, I don't know. But it, I mean, the potential of it's all coming back. And yes, even though we have the study, we don't have to do anything with it. It doesn't hold us down, so we gotta spend money. The only worth thing it could do is present stuff that then a lot of townspeople come and say, listen, this is feasible. Then we're gonna have to make a decision, but I have a feeling it's probably not.
When do you need a decision on this?
It depends on how fast you guys wanna get it done. And there's other people coming after this money as well.
You mean within, within our town, because this, because this is ARPA, our, our ARPA funds.
It, no, no, no.
Well, isn't that where the money, we're planning on getting the money to take care of this, no?
No. This is a totally separate.
This is state ARPA money.
I got you. Back to the opening of the discussion, Patty?
Yes, I will go back to the zoning discussion. We didn't talk about it this evening, but you expressed a desire in the town plan to develop the villages. It is, there is a disconnect in your thinking. I, I believe that it is important to develop the, to center development in the villages, to make the villages as attractive to residents as possible. In order to do that, you have got to figure out what to do about water and sewer. And as, as, as you were just saying, Paul, this study will provide you with answers. You can't go with your own opinions. You need to get informed information. Then you have the information in front of you that, that you can use to go forward.
I'm not sure I offered any opinion on this at all.
Yes, you did.
No, I don't think I did.
You're sounding very negative about it, Paul. Uh, Mike?
Let's not get personal, Patty. No, I did not offer an opinion on this.
I gotta say that somehow I teleconnected with my wife. She said exactly what I was gonna say more eloquently than I was gonna say it. You got a town plan, you've got designated village centers, there's funding available through the state for development within tax incentives and designated village centers. Our village centers are a dead end street right now, totally.
Just so you both know, I've had great, a lot of conversations with Brandon about doing all of this. Okay, so I, I know I always sound negative. I've always got something negative to say, but that's because I tend to let the elephant out in the room. Paul?
I make a motion, that will you approve it and go forward for whatever the value is on.
And a seconded.
There's a motion and a second on the floor?
I just wanna get the value, what was the total?
Forty-two and change. I didn't get what the change was, but it doesn't matter. It, well, yeah, it probably does.
It does.
Yeah, it does.
I just.
Forty-two thousand and thirty dollars.
And thirty dollars.
Forty-two thousand and thirty dollars.
Do you need to know where it would come from or do we talk about that later if, if anything goes through?
Well, I've already asked the town manager if there was a budget implication on this and I was corrected, alleged.
Since it's a reimbursement, there's not a, a budget implication. And considering will be invoiced monthly and reimbursed the following month, then it'll follow that trend regardless.
And you have cash flow, you're confident you have cash flow in the town that it's not an issue?
I'm a hundred percent confident.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Ray's got one for you.
I just have a quick question. You did in the beginning of the conversation stated that it has to go through the whole loan approval process and you'll get a letter verifying the percentage of reimbursement before. And I assume that's gonna come back to the board for approval before they sign on the dotted line anyway?
Correct. So, so at some point in time, you will have to sign an agreement with us. I would recommend that you don't do that until you are fully comfortable that you are being a hundred percent reimbursed for this process. And until you're at that point, don't sign.
I, I remember you saying.
So do I need to, help me word the motion. I know it's motion and seconded, but I wanna approve that pending the fact that we get all the money back. I don't wanna.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if you can say that.
Pending a hundred percent reimbursement.
Pending a hundred percent reimbursement.
They give us that information before we move forward.
What, what, what good is that in a motion? If you don't get it, you don't get it. What are you gonna do, beat it out of a rock somewhere?
No, we don't have to sign it, right?
I, I guess I, I would make, make the suggestion that it was that you sign and submit the loan application. And then upon receipt of getting answers related to subsidy, then the board decides whether to sign the engineering agreement. The engineering agreement is what you're actually wanna hold off and not sign until you know. You'll get the funding information before that and then you can make the decision at that point in time whether you wanna sign the engineering.
All right, so let's try to get this motion clear on the floor.
Yeah, so we're going, we're going to go, the motion then is for the forty-two thousand and.
Thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars to apply for that loan.
To authorize a town manager to sign the loan application to the state?
Yeah, to authorize town manager for, not to exceed forty-two thousand and thirty dollars. For the study of solid.
Wastewater feasibility study.
Wastewater what?
Feasibility study.
Waste water feasibility study, okay. So the motion I, as I have it, is a motion to approve forty-two thousand three hundred, forty-two thousand thirty dollars to authorize the town manager to sign the application to the state for the study of the wastewater feasibility study. I guess that's for the waste, for the wastewater feasibility study. At this point in time, we don't need to really worry about the hundred percent reimbursement because we're not signing on the money issue at this point in time, correct? Okay, so that is the motion, second, you second it, you're okay with the motion? So there's a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Obviously, there's been people in this room that have a whole lot more discussion on this than me. I'm objecting and will vote no because this is the, the night that it got presented, and I'm just gonna stand right by the rule that I've always lived by, which is usually there's something else that shows up after the vote. And I'm agreeing with Anne Marie when she says that we already know that some of the outcome here, that it's gonna be in the millions of dollars to dig and to put in a system because the town manager has already made the phone call to Windsor and Springfield, and their capability plants cannot take what this is. Don't shake your head.
That's not what she said.
That's, Anne Marie said that it was gonna take millions of dollars to build, which is.
We don't know.
Well, but, but.
And that is why.
Then let's get a, let's get, let's get a contractor's opinion then, because to get, get somebody that actually does the work, which is pretty easy to find out.
You, you only asked Windsor one question, but there are other ways to ask the question. That's the job of.
I said what I had to say, and you know what, I'm, I'm standing on the Steve Hyer rule for me.
Time, 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 timeout, let, please direct comments to the chair.
I did have that same concern, and I, when I, and Dave is correct, I have been to some of these meetings, and my concern was, if the town manager Windsor said no, then I didn't understand why then we should do a study. And that would, the other thing is, is that, so, when I presented that question, when you don't have a study, and you don't have anything to present to that town manager, when there are certain things that can be done, because it's happened before, where maybe a town manager wasn't, didn't wanna do something, but then you actually had a study that you could present before them, then there's a possibility, if there's free money, and you get a chance to have a possibility of something that would be really important to the town, that, that would be the only reason why, after I heard that, I said, then we should move forward with something like this because it is operating from the state, and we could possibly do something.
Kelly? Anyone? Are you sure?
I'm getting myself in trouble, I'm, I'm not saying nothing.
Nobody in this room can get themselves in any more trouble than me. That's a rule.
What do you mean?
What kind of trouble?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, what kind of trouble would you get in?
I don't like water. Paul, anything?
I made the motion. Did you need to say anything else?
I seconded.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Motion is to approve forty-two thousand thirty dollars to authorize the town manager to sign the application to the state for the wastewater feasibility study. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries three to two. Next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, letter to AOT, request for traffic engineering study of Route 131, Brandon.
Um, so I received, I received a phone call from, uh, Mr. Barry Bersky, uh, and he lives, he lives on 131, and he has a blind driveway. Um, and from his perspective, when he pulls out of his driveway, and the speed limit is fifty miles per hour, there's, uh, cars traveling down the road at great speeds, and he pulls out, they don't see him, they get right up on his tail end, and they flip him off, or they throw up their fists, and he said it's been happening for a long time. And he wants a, he wants AOT Traffic Operations to conduct a traffic engineering study, this is similar to the one that we did on Levine Road on 131, that was requested as well, um, and approved. So I've drafted this letter, which is almost identical to the one that we, we did last year, um, to have them review the speed limit in this area on 131. To see if forty miles per hour would be a more appropriate speed limit. I talked to Ray about this as well, Ray, do you have any opinion?
Yeah, like I said, review, there, it's gonna be a feasibility study, um, it might not be the speed adjustment, it might be blind drive ahead, it might be any kind of warning signs like that, we gotta start somewhere.
What role is it on?
Uh, 131. Uh, it's right, it's between, oh, I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine, finish.
Okay.
I have a lot to say about this. That's all.
It's, it's, uh, between Weathersfield Center Road and Thrasher Road on 131.
Weathersfield Center Road's also a blind entrance, so, help that.
Just step on it.
And, and, and Mike, do you have somebody behind you that would like to be recognized?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, I think it was, what was it, last year, couple of years, I also complained in a meeting, um, a couple of meetings, about the same thing coming off of our right-of-way. I asked for a mirror or something because it's forty miles an hour, and people are definitely not doing forty miles an hour, and I will tell you right now, I have almost had a heart attack, I don't know how many times, coming out of my right-of-way to go to work every single morning, every single morning, I almost get hit.
Yeah.
And I live on 144 Carian Road, and that little Noel coming up, people are flying, and I have to come out, my music's off, my windows are down, whether it's freezing, raining, or anything. So I hope that they'll do something for him because it's nothing to do for us. I'm still, every day, I basically take a chance. I'm pulling out of my right-of-way to go to work every morning. They, I, and I have been flipped off, I have had somebody from this close, I've had people slamming their brakes on, and they leave black marks, and I have to hear, I have, I literally have to hear to see if I can go, and I think I can, and I, I stomp on it, I spun out of my road and everything, and people come flying right up there and almost hit me. And I've had a woman on Easter, last Easter, get right on my butt after doing that, flipping me off and everything. It, it's terrible, so I hope that they'll do something for him.
Ray.
I'm just looking for a description.
Sorry, I didn't mean, I, I meant just.
Sorry, I'm, sorry.
Sorry. I'm so sorry, that was improper.
It's right after the Weathersfield Inn, as you're heading towards Springfield.
Yeah, between, um, like John Jensen's Road, all of them.
Correct, yeah.
Carian Road is just before Lions Drive.
Yes, it's, I'm right in between, yeah. And it's dangerous. It's, it's very scary, especially when I have kids.
But it is for you there.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Where are you at? Uh, we, we don't really have a say in this at this point, correct?
Well, basically, this would be a letter from us to the state, so, similar to the last one, the board approved the chair to sign it, Dave signed that one, you and I would sign this one, then Ray would sign it, and the police chief would sign it, and we would send this to the state, that would trigger, um, AOT to conduct a traffic engineering study, and then basically what happens from that point is a traffic engineering study goes to the traffic committee at the state, a committee, um, the committee reviews it, and then makes a decision, um, which is a similar process to what happened before. Um, it doesn't cost us anything. But that's, that's the process that we took with Levine Road.
So my word worked, and, but you need four of you guys to get this one done?
Well, we could, we.
Well, you said that I was the only one that signed the.
No, it was you and I, you and I signed the last one, so.
I don't know, I don't remember.
So thi- this is between Thrasher Road and Weathersfield Center?
Yep.
It's gonna get worse with the pavement.
Yeah, it won't be, yes.
Yes, it will.
It'll pick it up to sixty.
Yeah, so, so this is, uh, what, approximately, what, maybe?
Half a mile, maybe.
Yeah.
And similar to the last time, they'll explain exactly how, what the length is and everything when they come to a decision.
Well, I, I guess my question is, should we just ask the state to evaluate the entire road be, be, between Downers Four Corners and Thrasher Road, and make appropriate adjustments where necessary in one false loop, so that we're not doing this again next year? Um, from Weathersfield Center Road to Dan Jarvis Road or something?
Who's the regional AOT guy?
That was my original recommendation, but then we.
He had to stand up just so, because he's behind you, so I'm just.
Oh, I'm on the same page with Brandon. I, I would extend it from where they stopped on Henry, uh, uh, Levine Road, out through to the top of the hill towards the gulf. I mean, it's, that whole section is not good. Not just to Center Road, I would, I would go beyond Center Road.
Are there a lot of accidents up there?
That Center Road intersection is a bunch.
Okay, so, why don't we, why don't I amend the letter to include the length of the road, and with attention to this specific area, and we'll sign it tomorrow?
I, I, I mean, any other comments from anybody? Paul?
Ray's got one, but I, I wanna say.
Say that.
I, I, I'm in agreement for more, and I'm in agreement for, I, I want, I, it's irrelevant now, but somebody else sent a letter, and, and we didn't seem to do anything but.
Well, I didn't send a letter, if you're talking to me.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't send a letter, I was in the meetings, and.
Okay, well, anyways.
It was about the.
Does, does this?
It was.
Yeah, I, what I'd like to do is also see if Ray's or anybody else has got anything else in town, because if we're sending something, I mean, yes, let's do this whole road and see. I'm also curious about all the paving we just did, Dave and I were just talking about all these accidents that are out. It's like, it's like clear ice after, when a green's on a thing now.
Oh.
I, I would also ask if we could include 106 from Kendrick's Corners Road in the village as well. Because I need to see if they can do anything about that, coming off Lions Drive with plow truck or pulling in John Jensen's Road, the plow truck is four.
What is it there now?
Forty miles an hour.
It's fifty across the flat, changes to forty just about John Jensen, a little bit before John Jensen Road, and goes up, how far?
Coming, coming out of, people coming out of the village heading towards Kendrick's Corners Road, um, when you're in a dump truck coming out of John Jensen's Plowing.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you have to go.
About halfway down the hill, it goes to fifty.
On Lions Drive pulling out to go back into the village.
So, 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 so Brandon, why don't you get with Ray and, and put together a list of areas that you want the state to study?
Okay.
This is, this is an act, it's, it's, I believe it's nineteen seventy-eight, does that ring a bell, John? It's not the year, it's just the, the law. It's a, it's the, um, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, nineteen seventy-eight, I believe, which is, um, the use of traffic control devices.
He's looking at you like you're nuts.
I, I bring this up because the last time we had this conversation where he was involved, he's like, how the hell do you know that? It was because I just got.
Well, I can say, if you just put a warning sign, then that's a patrol, it isn't a legal.
No.
Exactly.
Well, you know, that's true, too. You know, if you don't, if you, if you don't get the police out there, you, you, you know, I mean, if they're doing sixty-five now in a fifty, they're still beating, you know, and, and putting forty up isn't gonna change that. Part of that law, what it's. Yeah, but part of that law, what it says is that, that it, it would be inappropriate to make, um, criminals out of normally law-abiding citizens, where eighty, they assume that eighty percent of the population will drive.
Mr. Chair, I like your suggestions, nine thirteen, can you just like handle it with the? There you go. Nine thirteen, I just asked Paul.
Okay, so.
So, Brandon, get that taken care of, and let me know when you need a signature.
Sounds good. The next three agenda items can be tabled. If necessary.
Is that what you're gonna say, I'm sorry?
Oh, were, were you gonna ask to table?
I was gonna, is that what you're doing?
I don't, I don't want them to be tabled. Um, I just, I want, I just want to move them to the next agenda.
Okay, sorry.
To lay on the table has a different meaning.
But we really need to get to the, the high priority building improvements in the next agenda for sure. Can we put it at the first item?
You put it where you would like, and.
Okay.
We will get there. We don't have a hearing, dad burn it at the next meeting. Uh, appointments, I don't see any appointments on here. Uh, future agenda items, actually, proposed future agenda items, we just moved three items down there. Uh, is there anything else, proposed future agenda items? To discuss? That we need to? Okay, no appointments, nothing seen there, approve the warrants, Paul?
Uh, John? Oh, he left, damn it.
Um, before you approved the warrant, did everybody receive my email about the revised warrant?
That's what I was trying to get, I don't know what to approve.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of it?
So we've revised the warrant to include the dump truck.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
I saw it earlier.
That's the only change on the warrant, um, and Mike reminded me of that today.
It's on this one.
So we, we added on.
I, I missed it when we did the agenda, and, and I reminded him of it today. Uh, this is something that we, we actually voted on, uh, where the money was coming from, but, so this is just a warrant for it.
All right, Kelly, do you have it up?
I do.
Do you wanna say it? Because I don't know where the title page is.
I can try, I, I can't do you, but I can do a me.
Can't do you.
General fund. Payroll, fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and twelve cents. Operating expenses, sixty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars and one cent. Highway fund. Payroll, seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-three cents. Operating expenses, eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Solid waste management fund. Payroll, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and eleven cents. Operating expenses, twenty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty cents. The library, salary, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and eight cents. No. No operating expenses, they have a grant of seven hundred dollars in that section, whatever that means. They, uh, dump truck, seventy-five thousand five hundred and eight dollars and sixty cents. Grand totals of the, uh, wages, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Operating expenses with the dump truck, one hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and seven dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the warrants, any further discussion?
Good job, Kelly, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Uh, any other business, yes?
Uh, you and the town manager, one hundred percent sure that you, or you come together before six-thirty with the treasurer to, to make sure that there's not gonna be a deficit in the, in the FY twenty-two, twenty-three general fund?
Yes, sir.
You're absolutely sure?
Yes.
Okay, because if you're not, you should have a special meeting before the thirtieth to make sure that doesn't happen. It's happened, it's happened once before, and then we got in a really big jam from the auditors, and then, and then it was in the era of, and he's projecting a, a deficit.
Yeah.
Due to whatever it was, somebody forgot to pay for something? There's money available to transfer, and it needs to be done before six-thirty twenty-two.
So what, what, what will happen is since the fund balance carried forward is it would automatically come from that first, and then there would be remaining fund balance in FY twenty-three that carries forward.
Nate Sterns, you've gotten whoever's opinion you need to get to, right?
I can get Nate Sterns' opinion on that.
Okay.
Go ahead, because the alternative is, it doesn't happen, and then we need to have a special meeting, and then have a, have a tax put on, on the, on the tax bill to make up for a deficit that didn't show.
Right, right, the, the, the point that Dave's just trying to make sure that we avoid is, after six-thirty, you just entered another fiscal year.
That's exactly.
And, and that is, that, you know, so we have to resolve that prior to that happening, if, if there is a situation.
I know you've told me that, but I'm still nervous.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll call you tomorrow and what. Okay, I'll, I'll I'll call you tomorrow and what.
No, you don't have to call me. No, no. I'm in the minutes, I'm on the tape, I'm telling you as the manager. Call council, to call whoever you need to call to make sure.
He's going to. Call Dave.
I'm gonna call AG.
Okay, uh, any other business? Uh, set the meeting for seven-five. I need a motion to.
I don't, Brandon, the fireworks permit, or is that not being mentioned or does someone have to sign that? I just signed it next to you. What is that?
So I have two things. One, to move the meeting to July fifth and then you wanna.
I was trying to get through that. Motion to move, move the seven-four meeting, which is on Monday, seven-four holiday, to seven-five, which is Tuesday.
So moved.
Hold a second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Quickly, uh.
May I ask a question, please? So the fireworks permit we put in.
No, we're not, excuse me, we're not on that at this moment. We're talking about just.
Okay, I thought it was, I thought it was gonna be tabled, I'm sorry.
Hang on a sec.
Um, I just, I wanted to mention, uh, speaking for the recording secretary, but the recording secretary and myself will not be here for that meeting. Um, our, just, our son's leaving for um boot camp, so we're gonna see him off. But um, so we'll need a recording secretary and just, you know, I will not be here either.
Not only do we need a recording secretary, is everybody else gonna be around? Or at least three of us?
I will be.
Dave?
Me? I'll be hayin'.
Way too far ahead for that. Ask me what I'm doing tomorrow.
There's hay to be had. Okay, the motion on the floor, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
That meeting will be at six-thirty on seven-five. We're not changing the time.
Okay.
Next.
Um, the next item is a fireworks application that we received. Um, the, the date of the display is July third, twenty-twenty-two. It was turned in late and does not um agree with the policy. So the police chief refused to sign, um, basically stating that if he does sign it, then it would set precedent for future um for future applications. Um, so because the police chief didn't sign, um, I also am not going to sign. We do have one signature, which is Darren Spalding. Um, so the fire chief did inspect it and he did, and he did sign off on it.
So it's twenty-one days. When when was it, when did they give it to the town?
I got the notice last week. And I filled it out as fast as I could get it and got Darren up there to look at it.
Okay.
What, what, what?
My, my beautiful, my beautiful wife is sitting back there and she has the insurance stuff because I wasn't able to get it with it because my printer at home isn't working, so she has that. Darren said to bring it today.
Um, I'm, in the past, Mr. Dawson, have you ever re, have you had firework displays before?
Yes.
Did the police chief?
I'm not gonna lie to you, but.
Yeah, so did.
That's a good start.
Did the, did the police chief, sorry, uh, did the police chief notify you that there was a policy in place and an application that needed to be filled out?
No, I've never been spoken to before until somebody meant called the town and said that we had fireworks here in previous years.
Where is here?
One forty-four Kirin Road. It's on the application. We've, we've never had a problem. We go out, we wet the grounds down, we wet the grasses down. The trees have been all moved back. A lot of trees have been cut down. It's been all cleared out and we've never had an issue before.
Did we get a copy of that or?
We don't have a copy of it?
It came in before the packet when, yeah.
I mean, it's our country's birthday. I served in the military and I appreciate this guy's son and tell him I said thank you for your service, you know? We just wanna celebrate our country's birthday and have a good time. And we do it responsibly.
Well, I I understand that, but I I also have to agree with the town manager and the chief of police that 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 we have a policy in place for a reason. So that we have time to review these things and make sure everybody is aware and and we have more than, do we have other displays going on that night?
Um, I can't tell you definitely about that night. I do have, I do have a recommendation.
Okay, what's your recommendation?
For the police chief and I to go take a look at the site and then if the police chief agrees that everything's okay for the.
I I I would also look into whether there are other uh uh events in the area. Uh, it doesn't have to be just in Weathersfield, but really close to us.
Yep.
Because the whole idea here is to, that if, if there's a catastrophic event that happens in any one of them, then poof, there goes all your, your services to to deal with that. And then what if something else happens? So so, you know, it's how many can we have in one, one area at one time?
I think. Okay, I I I seem to recall that one of the people that work in that office is having fireworks as well.
Well, that, well, okay.
Well, there is, there is other events going on.
Mark Gerard.
Right, Mark, right, Mark Gerard.
What does our policy say?
Twenty-one days.
Prior to the event, twenty-one days of paperwork is filed?
Yes.
Okay, so how are you gonna get out of that? The board would have to waive the policy.
That's the only way.
And and I I didn't get it twenty-one days prior. I got it at the beginning of last week.
So that's the reason she didn't sign.
But but that's the reason for the denial at this, so far, at this point in time, uh, because it, there is a policy.
Um, there's, there's some history to revising that policy too. There were instances of damages, alleged damages done at different events. That's why the policy, I wish John was still here because he's, he works for North Star or whatever. He he shoots them off. So he knows of different ones. So that's why three or four parties need to sign off on this, including the police chief and the fire chiefs and everybody so that everybody knows what's going on in case something happens.
I I I too am a veteran and and I appreciate your statement about celebrating our country and and our, you know, our vets. Um, but if I don't hear a motion to waive the policy, um, I I I don't think there's anything I, well, there's nothing I could do. So is there anybody here willing to make a motion to waive the policy? Because there is no need for you or the town manager or the the chief of police to go out if the policy isn't wa, gonna be waived.
Right.
Exactly.
So can I just ask one quick thing? Either two ways. So if we get a notice saying, saying, getting the notice that we got that didn't give us enough time to put in for it, where, you know, how, you know what I'm saying? It's kinda not fair to us to, that we weren't given that amount of time.
That, that, that's okay, that's okay. Let, let it go because it's not gonna get us anywhere. I just wanna redate that and I want it on the next agenda for fireworks in twenty-one days. Please, thank you.
So if he, if he, if he does that, he changes the date. Um. I I mean, is it dated for his notice? The date that he fills out the application is twenty-one days ahead of, or is it our date that's twenty-one days ahead?
No, it, it starts at the date the paperwork was submitted and it was submitted on the says it was.
I gave it to Darren Spalding, yes, because that's the first time I met him. Um, he said that he would bring it in today.
Yep.
What's the date on it?
So the date that it says you signed this, Mr. Dawson, is June ninth.
Was six-nine, yeah, a week ago, just over a week ago.
But it was actually submitted.
Ten days ago.
But it was actually submitted yesterday.
Right, I received it on like the eighth and I, I filled it out on the ninth.
Okay.
So it's just over a week ago when I got it, just a, maybe a week and a half. So even a week and a half doesn't give me the, really, the twenty-one days.
Well, but but I think what the town manager is saying is the clock started when you turned it in yesterday.
Okay.
Not nine days, not on the ninth, right, Brandon? Isn't that what, is is that how it's, it's?
Yeah, even though it's, it was signed on the ninth, it's the day that it was submitted. Um.
I understand that and and I want it on the next agenda, so if I have to push these out, I can push them out.
Okay.
Does that satisfy the twenty-one days is what I'm trying to get to?
If it was the fifth.
So anyways.
Can I?
Wait a minute, let, let him.
Can I check on the calendar on my phone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you may. Thank you for asking.
You're welcome.
So my, my question was that.
No.
We just barely received it and then he went to call about it and uh, I don't remember exactly what happened, so.
Oh, it's me, Steve.
I'm just curious. I mean, we received a letter saying to do, you know, to do whatever, you know, what we have to do in order to do something. And it didn't give us enough time for the policy date.
Can I answer that question?
I'm just curious about that.
So the, the application was signed on the ninth.
Right.
So if you would have submitted it on the ninth when it was signed, you would have had enough time. And number two.
My, my understanding was that I had to wait for the fire chief to sign it. That's why I waited.
Yeah, that's why we had to wait was because he was told the fire chief had to sign it.
And number two, um, it's always best practice to check with the town that you're letting fireworks off in to see if there's a policy in place.
So so when, when would the twenty-one days be from now?
Uh, twenty-one days from now.
Would that be July ninth?
That, that's what I was trying to get to, Brandon.
That's, that's correct. So, but if we have it on the agenda on the fifth, since the display wouldn't be until the ninth, then it would meet that twenty-one day threshold.
Okay, can you put it for the twenty-first, uh, July ninth then, please?
Yes, so I'm gonna.
It'll be on the agenda for July fifth.
I'm, I'm gonna modify your date of display to July ninth or July tenth or how do you want me to modify?
Whatever Saturday is, July ninth, right?
July ninth, yes.
Okay, July ninth.
Can you just have, can you have my wife initial that, that that has been done, please?
Yes.
So you need to get Bill involved too.
Yes, and I think.
And and can I find out what the police chief was missing? Um, I'm, I'm kinda curious on that because I'd like to get that rectified.
I don't think it was a matter of what was missing. It was a matter of, he, he was looking at the same thing we are, the timeframe.
Okay.
Brandon will, Brandon will take care of that for you, I think.
All right, I appreciate it and I don't know what you needed. Um, I said something about insurance and I didn't, we weren't sure what you needed.
Mike, Michael, hang on a second. Brandon, when you get done correcting this thing, are you giving it to her? Do they have to go find the police or do you, you taking care of this?
I, I take, so it can be submitted, these get submitted to the town office and then from there, we coordinate the signatures.
Perfect. I just wanna make sure everybody knows what's going on.
I was gonna say, the police chief is like thirty seconds past you.
I just, just wanna make sure everybody knows what's going on, that's all.
So will your rain day be?
Mr. Todd, you'll be out on your back porch watching.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Dawson, will your rain day be seven-ten?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
She, she, you're gonna have her initial it?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, does that clear up other, any other business?
All right, I'd like to say thank you, guys. I appreciate your time and um.
Thank you.
Uh, will we be notified if that is um, put in, accepted?
Or do we have to be in the meeting?
It'll be approved in the meeting on seven-five. Well.
Okay, so.
Potentially.
Yeah, if everything's in place, yes.
So, so does somebody, does somebody have to be there to do that or no?
I, I don't believe so. You've turned in an application. We'll review the application. It might be good to have somebody there to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, cause right now I'm at work and my boss was nice and lucky to let me get on here and and do this and I'm sure my wife has probably got better things to do to sit there in almost three hours. So, um, I just don't know how long it takes, how long it gets to get to him.
She could have brought, she could have brought pizza.
I could have, cause I'm about starving.
I would, I'd have brought pizza, but there's been a lot of beer with it.
All right, thank you. We'll see somebody, I guess, on the set, on the fifth?
Uh, the only thing I had is it's on, that's the best side of town, so maybe get Josh involved so he can sign off on it.
Yeah, it wouldn't be bad.
Darren signed off on it, but I don't, I thought.
Darren's a firewerker, I think.
I thought it's fire chief.
Yeah, both sides have to sign it, but since the police chief didn't sign it, I saw no reason to.
Yeah, I just.
To go.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, um, any other business? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nobody wants to make a motion?
I, I did.
I admit it.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Aye, aye, aye.
Did your wife show you where I said?
I commented.
Hi, Daddy.